Commissioner Kizer.
President.
Commissioner Anderson.
Dito.
Commissioner Nanki.
Hero.
Commissioner McCoy.
Here.
Commissioner Osick.
Here.
Commissioner Hoy.
Here.
Commissioner Cook. Here. Vice Chair Lewis.
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Vice Chair Lewis, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
None that I know of.
Okay. Public comment? We have nobody for public comment? Is there anybody here that would like to speak to the Commission for the Housing Authority of the City of Salem? Hearing none, we'll move along to the consent calendar. Vice Chair Lewis.
I move the passage of the consent calendar with the following poll, 3.2B by Commissioner Anderson.
3.2B?
3.2B.
Yeah. Okay, got a second?
Second.
Thank you. Seconded by Commissioner Cook. Moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar with a poll of 3.2B by Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion? All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes? Commissioner Anderson, you have a motion for us.
Yes, I move the grant, approve the grant agreement between Housing Authority of the City of Salem and the City of Salem for homeless rental assistance program.
Second.
Got a second? Okay. To your motion.
Thank you. This is a fantastic program, and I pulled it just to give it some more publicity and make sure the public knows what we as a council, through the leadership of the mayor, when he started his term, are doing to do what we can to alleviate the massive housing problem we have in this community as we do in the entire country. So I'm hoping that Director Wiltz could just give the public and the council a little bit more of the details of this.
Happy to. So this program came together through the council, a lot of work, and the mayor for sure. And there's four primary components. First, it's going to be transitional housing into permanent housing, so that's one component. A second component, social services that are being provided by many social service agencies in the city. So social service is the second. There's a whole bunch of different supports that we're going to bring to bear. The clients, for instance, a lot of our homeless clients might not have an ID card or a driver's license or anything that allows them to get into the medical assistance. And finally, the Housing Authority itself is going to provide 100 rental vouchers to the 100 homeless, highest-risk homeless individuals. What we structured here is for a year. We know that homelessness goes well beyond a year. We've made some good progress already, and we're aggressive and eager to move forward, doing the best we can for our clients and those that have limited resources and need our civic help.
Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you very much, Director Wiltz. This is very important, and I know we will move through with this with as much speed and as much thoroughness as we can. And I'd also like to say, I was reminded that I didn't use my microphone the whole first half of what I said, so I hope the people at home could hear me. Usually, I am told to not use a microphone as opposed to use a microphone. But again, thank you very much for doing this.
Commissioner, we did not notice.
Andy, you've already got some -- how many people are already in the program and how
many are queued up to start entering?
We've got seven that are in housing, and just to be candid, some of those seven have already relapsed and come back and forth, right? That's the nature of this too, by the way. If you haven't been there for a long time, it's hard to get there, right? But we have seven in housing, and we have 15 other clients that are getting some services around them in order to help them to get into transitional or permanent. We are beating the bushes for --
Literally.
Literally. For landlords to help us out. That's one of the challenges we have, and we've had several strategies around that. But that seems to be an ongoing issue, and we will continue to make that happen as well.
Okay, great. Any other questions, Andy? Keep up the great work. It's encouraging to see seven people in and 12 more. You know, that's 20 homeless people that hopefully we'll take care of in the next few months and hopefully turn around their life. So this is important stuff, and thank you for -- you and your staff for coming up with the plan and now overseeing it as we move forward.
I should say one thing, if I may. There's a handful of landlords that stepped up right away. I'm going to get their names and bring those back next time and make sure that they understand that we're appreciative of that.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, the only other thing here on the agenda is an information report, which I recommend to you. It sort of shows you what the ongoing work that the Housing Authority is doing and the number of people they're helping and who they are and average annual income. It's very informative for those who haven't seen it. It's available on the website. And with that, there's no other business, so this meeting of the Housing Authority of Salem is adjourned.
Call us meeting of the City of Salem Urban Renewal Agency for August 14th to order. If the recorder would please call the roll.
Board Member Kizer.
President.
Board Member Anderson.
Likewise.
Board Member Nanki.
Here.
Board Member McCoy.
Here.
Board Member Osick.
Here.
Board Member Hoy.
Here.
Board Member Cook.
Here.
Board Member Lewis.
Here.
Chair Bennett.
Here. Okay. Do we have addition or deletions?
We do not have any additions or deletions.
Okay. No reports from boards, commissions, or committees? No one has signed up for public comment? Is there anyone that wanted to speak to the Urban Renewal Agency? The consent calendar.
I move approval of consent calendar.
Go ahead.
And the consent calendar consists of the minutes of the July 10th URA meeting and the July 24th URA meeting.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes? We have no resolutions, action items, but we do have some information reports. Ms. Rutherford.
Good evening. Kristin Rutherford, I'm dropping my mic here. Kristin Rutherford, Urban Development Director. The information reports before you tonight include our administrative purchases, and you'll see our renewed contract with the Strategic Economic Development Corporation, SEDCOR. This shows up under Urban Renewal, and the balance of the contract shows up in the council agenda under Administrative Purchases. We also have an information report providing an update on our downtown streetscape design process, and we're in the middle of the procurement process right now. This spring, we convened a streetscape work group to provide input onto a scope of work. We issued a request for proposals in May. That RFP process closed the middle of July, and we have been going through the process of scoring those proposals here over the last few weeks. We have, in that RFP process and through that scope of work, outlined specific criteria that these different firms would have to meet. Things like their schedule, timeline, the qualifications of those that will be participating on this, other projects that they've done, their understanding of our project scope. Key to part of this proposal is the outreach process that will occur. We've asked for a number of meetings that will begin this fall to get public input onto what that design will ultimately look like. So over the next few weeks, we will be wrapping up that solicitation and then kicking off that outreach process to get that public input. I have, finally, I do have our downtown revitalization manager, Cherie Wargren, here, who has been managing this process to answer any specific questions that you might have.
Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you. A couple of questions, and perhaps you can answer these. By class, who was in the work group that was convened? I don't need to know names, I just need to know business owners downtown, members of the public, that sort of thing.
Yes. So it was primarily property owners downtown, business owners that are downtown, and then key strategic community partners, including representation from Willamette University, the Chamber of Commerce.
Any downtown residents?
We did have downtown residents, yes.
Perfect, okay. And these public hearings, how many of them you think you're going to have? Are they going to be actual hearings before somebody or sort of charrette sort of things?
Right. They're not public hearings, they're public meetings.
Okay.
And they will -- we'll have a variety of different formats that we follow. Open houses and charrette-type meetings.
Great, thank you very much.
Any further questions on that one? Did you want to do North Gateway then?
Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilor Kizer.
Thanks. Thank you. I think you answered probably my questions I was going to ask you because I sent you an email earlier saying I was going to ask them, but -- and I received the RFP that was sent out from Cherie, and there's the evaluation criteria in that RFP. So, you know, if folks are interested, they can go in and look at that specifically, so -- but thank you.
Go ahead.
So the second, or I guess third, information report that is in your packet is our North Gateway food study. And I have Annie Gorski here, who is our Economic Development Manager, and I'm going to ask her to come up and speak to the food study and let you know where that's going and what our next steps will be with council approval.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So in your packet is an information report.
Could you introduce yourself again, Annie?
Good evening. My name is Annie Gorski. I'm the Economic Development Manager here at the city. In your report, or in your report this evening, there's an information report, as Kristin mentioned, related to the food study. This came out of the Portland Road Action Plan over a year ago. In this report, we were looking at ways to support food-related businesses in the North Gateway area specifically. You'll see there are three items highlighted there that we looked at. One of those was a commercial kitchen, or space where folks could operate within a commercial kitchen space. The other was a food hub, looking specifically at places for individuals to aggregate and distribute food within the corridor. And the last component was looking at a incubator of sorts. Again, looking at a space where the city or the Urban Renewal Agency could support food-related businesses. So with that, we're planning to come back later this year with more specific recommendations related to the food study, but at this point, just wanted to give you an update on where we are.
Okay. Any questions? Councilor Cook.
I just wanted to thank you for putting this in the packet tonight. It's really great work and really important work, and I appreciate all of the work that is being done.
Councilor McCoy.
Annie, I noticed, I saw in there that one of the places you cited that had some similar kind of a program going was the Portland Mercato, which I've been, I was at that a couple years ago, it's still, obviously, still up and running. And it was sort of an amalgam of, as I recall, of what you're, sort of mixed up all three of them. I think it had a kitchen to rent, it had some startup businesses, it had food trucks outside, right?
Yeah, all of that.
It's had all three of those, right?
That's correct, yes.
And it's doing pretty well, from what I understand. I was impressed with it when I saw it, it seemed to be doing well. Is that something that you're considering? After I read it, no one stood out, but it sounded like you were leaning towards...
That is one of the options that we're exploring further. We're also looking very strategically at where in the community some facilities already exist. For example, the commercial kitchens. And whether or not it makes sense for us to sort of be the lead in that, or our role is more the alignment of those that need that kind of facility, and identifying the partners that are in the community, and then seeing if there's still a gap that we could help meet. But as we have gone through this process, what comes out more and more is something that we think we'll be exploring to see whether it really would be feasible here, is something along the line to the Mercato, where you could have the commercial kitchen capacity, some retail sort of space, and that kind of public market component. Whether or not it would have the food truck element like they have there, we haven't talked as much about that. It's the, the Mercato has this internal space and external space, so we've talked more about sort of the internal components that they have.
Thank you. We're great. Yes.
Anyone else? All right, thank you very much. We have no special orders of business or public hearings, so without objection, the Urban Renewal Agency is adjourned. Call us meeting of the Salem City Council for August 14th to order. If the recorder would please call the roll.
Councilor Kizer.
President.
Councilor Anderson.
President.
Councilor Nanki.
President.
Councilor McCoy.
President.
Councilor Osick.
Here.
Councilor Hoy.
Here.
Councilor Cook.
Here.
Councilor Lewis.
Here.
Mayor Bennett.
Here. Councilor McCoy, approval of additions and deletions?
I move approval of addition to the agenda, revision to the agenda, actually.
Sorry.
What the vision is, we are moving item 3.3C, which is a community forestry strategic plan, to 6H under informational reports. You can still talk.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes? Okay. Council comments? Councilor Lewis.
Well, I'll get to be the first. It's been an interesting month, starting with August 1st, the opportunity to go out in the neighborhood picnic areas, National Night Out. I was lucky enough to go along with Chief Miller, Vice Chief Miller, and it's nice to be back in a police car, I mean, in the back of a police car, not back in one. There's a movie about that. And, you know, even though it was really, really hot, they were still out enjoying their neighborhoods, and it was a great time. The very next day, we, many of us were at the coronation or the celebration of the Minto Island Bridge, also a very warm day. But I tell you that, and I've said this before, I walk that bridge almost every single day that it's open, and now every day. It is such a special thing to have in a city like Salem. It is truly unique and really sets us aside. And then also, last Saturday, I got to ride in the back of a convertible at the Salem Town 50th Anniversary, and that was also exciting. Nothing was thrown, nothing. It was enjoyable time, and Salem Town is a great addition to the City of Salem.
You're living large there, Councilor. Councilor McCoy.
I, at the behest of my twin daughters and my granddaughter, participated in the High Street Hustle on Saturday, which was --
Good for you.
Which was great fun, and I walked the 5K. I walked the 5K. My granddaughter thought she was going to run the 5K, but we ended, she ended up walking it, and Grandpa caught her, which, much to her chagrin. But that is really a great community event, 900-plus people, and it was really, really fun. And the highlight is, as the little kids, the little one- and two-year-olds going their 1K up to Cottage Street and back, or wherever they go, cuter than heck, it was really fun. Great community event.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Anderson.
That took place in Ward Two, Councilor McCoy, too. I have three matters. First one is, yesterday, I was privileged to take part, along with Councilor Kizer, in an expression of Salem's, citizens of Salem's view about what happened in Charlottesville and standing in solidarity with the people of that town. I think the sentiments that were expressed yesterday are in keeping with what we have done as the city council when we declared Salem an inclusive city, welcoming to everybody. And so I was happy to see a number of people there. It was a terrific demonstration, we got lots of support, and I was glad to do it, and thank you to Councilor Kizer for coming out.
Well, thank you to both of you, Councilor.
Secondly, I am a trial lawyer, and I have a trial set right now for August 22nd, but I suspect that that is going to get postponed. And if it is postponed, I will intend to be at Bush's Pasture Park at 9:00 on the morning of the 22nd to engage in whatever citizen help cleanup that needs to be done. And I will be posting that on my Facebook page, I will be posting it in Next Door Bush's Park, and I've asked Kenny if he would put something out on the council. And I encourage anybody else in the council who feels like that, go to, find a park in your neighborhood that might need some help after the, whatever happens there on the 21st. This is a reference that only some people will get, but I don't want any of the parks looking like Max Jazger's farm after Woodstock. And then finally, the mayor and Councilor Cook and I were privileged to get all wet at the family fest at the park down at Riverfront Park 10 days ago, and it was a very interesting event. I will have to tell you that I went down almost every time, and I was wearing a dress shirt and a bowtie. And the mayor was there, and Councilor Cook was there, and Chief was, Chief, where's Chief Moore? He was here, and so were at least one or two of the deputy chiefs. And I'm looking at you, Chief Diblock, I don't think you were there, but maybe next year you can come. So it was a fun event, and I saw, we saw lots of family people out there, and it was a terrific way to help the family.
Yeah, why?
Pardon me?
A dunk tank.
A dunk tank, yes, yes.
Dunk tank, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Counselor Kizer.
Thank you. Just want to echo Councilor Anderson's comments about yesterday, having the rally for Charlottesville so we could stand together with the people of Charlottesville. I actually have a friend from middle school and high school who just moved there last month, and on Facebook she said, you know, "We're really hurting right now, we've had a rough couple of days." And I can only imagine. And she was a resident of Salem up until she moved, and she was really happy to see the support coming out of her hometown for them. I had the pleasure, I think it was last week, with Councilor Hoy of opening Capital Pride in Salem, and that was a great gathering. I'd never been to it before. There were dozens of booths, it seemed, out, and lots of young people standing together to support LGBTQ in our community, and it was just a great show of pride in our city. And I was really happy to be able to open that with Councilor Hoy. I also participated in National Night Out with, I know, several other counselors. I got to ride in the front of a police car with Deputy Chief Belshaw, and Deputy Chief Belshaw's wife joined us, as well as a cadet. They were sitting in the back, and he said, you know, there's a certain way you get AC back there, but I can't figure it out. And they braved through about half of our ride without AC back there. And they couldn't get out either until we went around and let them out. And then halfway through, he goes, oh, that's how you turn it on. Figured it out, so, but it was a really great event, and it was fun. I got to go to my home National Night Out party, too, so.
Great. Councilor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to thank my colleagues for your attendance yesterday at the event and showing our solidarity. I'm sorry I was not able to be there, I was at a commitment up in Portland with family, but thank you for attending and showing our solidarity with Charlottesville. I think my colleagues have also stolen a little bit of my thunder in that, talking about National Night Out and Capital Pride, I think Councilor Kizer and I definitely got the better end of that bargain. We were down at the other end of the park while you all were getting dunked in the tank, and we definitely had the better deal. I just wanted to give thanks to Chief Diblock and Chief Moore and their staff. Just on a personal note, I had a friend who recently had a fire in her front yard. Somebody had gone by her house and tossed a cigarette or something in her dry grass and lit the entire yard on fire, and at least half of the yard is burned. And luckily, they got there, the neighbors and the fire department and the police department got there and put it out before it turned into a tragedy, and I've just been very grateful for that. And I just wanted to, she, I had dinner with her Sunday night, and she was, it was still very moved by it, and wanted to express my thanks to them, so thank you.
Great. Councilor Cook.
I know that Councilor Hoy and Councilor Kizer were there for part of it, because I believe you both got me squirming and then falling repeatedly into the dunk tank several times on video.
I may or may not have video.
I believe so. But despite all of the things that have happened this week with, or since the last time we had council, with National Night Out, and I know in my ward, we've been having quite a few car clouts and a lot of issues neighborhood-wise that are very important to people living here, and then something like Charlottesville happens, and it can seem, it can just kind of put us all off kilter. And I was just reminded about, we can do no great things. None of us can, but we can do small things with great love. And I'm so happy to be here with all of you, even if we agree or disagree on issues, the work that we're doing is important, and we are in solidarity with each other, and the work is coming from a place of love for our neighborhoods and for our neighbors. It just really is very difficult, having young kids trying to be able to decide how to have that conversation, and then recognizing, wow, I'm having to decide this now and not every day like some people do. So in the spirit of fighting fires, rather than fighting fire with fire, and in the spirit of the dunk tank, I think we should fight fire with water. We should fight division with restoration and fight the separations with unity. So I'm very happy to be here.
Great. Anyone else? I had the chance to, besides the dunk tank, National Night Out, I got to ride, the mayor gets to ride in the bear, which is its own special event, arriving at any of the Night Out locations. We were primarily in far south Salem for that. It was really enjoyable. Saturday, I attended the Inglewood Forest Festival in Ward One, in my neighborhood, in Inglewood neighborhood. It was a fantastic event. It went extremely well. Hundreds of people turned out. It was very, not only well-attended, it was incredibly well-organized. We, I presented a proclamation on your behalf from the city to them. This is our, this is the first part the city purchased in 1926, so it really was a great event. I hope, I hope Northeast Neighbors, which is the neighborhood association that handled it, is able to muster the energy, Nancy, to do it again next year. It was a, it was a good one, so. And then I also had the chance, among a number of other events that I was able to participate in. Councilor Osick and I were at the groundbreaking for the 180-unit Affordable Housing Project out on Portland Road, the Cornerstone Project, which, by the way, is a remarkable project of public and private participation. The city played a role, a number of private social service, or nonprofit social service agencies, state housing, and particularly Mountain West, which is the developer of the site. It also includes affordable... It also includes a 4,500-square-foot community center that'll provide residents of the area with substantial number of social service programs available to them. It's a, quite a remarkable project. So as you go by there, all the dust and, well, not quite as much today, but at that time, all the dust is really from a fantastic housing project going up out there, so. Okay, anyone else? All right, we'll move on then. Oh, Mr. Manager, did you want to comment on anything?
Just a quick reminder, because of the wonderful comments from counselors, many of the events that you're talking about couldn't happen without volunteers. So I'd like to remind city council and the public and those viewing at home that tomorrow is the deadline for the volunteer recognition awards. An opportunity to show some small gratitude for the individuals, volunteers, organizations that help the city and help our community deliver the results, help provide the, support the events that make Salem Salem. And again, that deadline is tomorrow at, at five.
Great. Thank you very much. All righty, we'll move on then. I have a proclamation. I'd like to invite up Erica Heisler, the Smart Northwest Region Program Manager, Spanish and English, and Gloria Anderson, a Smart Volunteer. Gloria has been a Smart Volunteer for four years and has read at three different elementary schools, Hoover, Morningside, and Swartham. And I'll do it with a microphone too. Erica Heisler. Gloria Anderson. Gloria, thank you very much for coming out this evening. These are folks involved with the Smart program and I have a proclamation to present to you. Whereas, without strong reading skills, children will face difficult challenges into adulthood and throughout their lives. And whereas, reading is the gateway to learning, opening doors to new possibilities and promising futures. And whereas, shared book reading and access to books during a child's formative years are the strongest predictors of early literacy skills. Do you agree so far? Good. Yeah. And whereas, Start Making a Reader Today, Smart, founded in 1992, engages community volunteers to read with pre-K through third-grade children for one hour per week during the school year. And whereas, 5,000 volunteers help thousands of Oregon children each year develop the self-confidence, enthusiasm, and motivation to read and succeed. And whereas, the city of Salem seeks more than 350 volunteers annually to assist with local Smart programs in schools during the 2017-18 school year. Now therefore, I Chuck Bennett, Mayor, do hereby proclaim September 2017, Smart Volunteer Recruitment Month, and encourage all residents to consider supporting strong reading programs in local schools dated this 4th day of August 2017.
Here's a copy, and would you keep them, like to save?
Sure. Okay. Beautiful. Thank you.
I just, very brief comments. Like Mayor Bennett said, I am the Northwest Program Manager for Smart in our region, which means I focus here in Salem and Marion County. But we are statewide. We're, we care, we pair caring adult volunteers with pre-K through third-grade kids in headstarts in elementary schools across the state. And each child in our program also receives two free books every month. So over the course of the year, they get 14 in total to take home and start their own little home libraries. And those are brand-new books as well, so. And so this year, we, as the school year is coming up, we are looking for more volunteers who would be willing to give a little bit of their time so that we can serve more students in the Salem area. And we generally ask just about an hour a week and that can really change the life of a child. So if you are interested, I will have some business cards or you can also go to our website at www.getsmartoregon.org for more information. And I'll let Gloria say a couple of words too about her experience.
So this is my fourth year with the Smart program, so I'm a reader for the Smart, but my husband would say, you are a Smart reader. When I retired four years ago, I knew I wanted to give back to my community in the form of volunteer. I just didn't know where that would be. But I thought, what better than something to do with our children? And so when I realized it was just one hour a week, I thought, I can certainly do that. What I didn't know was how important and meaningful that one hour a week is for those children. It really is individual, undivided attention with one child at a time. And you just cannot put a price on that. When you see those little faces, when they come into the reading room, week after week, you can see them coming in and trying to make eye contact with their reader to see if their reader is there. And when they see you, those little eyes just open up and their smiles go from ear to ear, and you know you're making a difference. So like everyone is saying, just one hour a week, if you're interested in making a positive difference for a child, I can guarantee you that one hour will soon become one of your favorite one-hours every week. So I encourage you to look it up.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much for the work. I had a chance to do that one day. We all did, I think, this past year. I thought it was really fun. I had a great time. I did mine all in Spanish and I don't speak Spanish, so. I really enjoyed it.
You don't know how you...
No, honestly, the principal asked me if I was bilingual. I was that convincing. I was really taken with that, which, no, I'm not. I wish I was. And then we have a presentation I think a number of folks are interested in in the community, and that will turn over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. On Monday, August 21st, Salem will be fortunate to experience a total solar eclipse.
What?
We'll...
Who knew?
Solar eclipse of the heart? What?
And we, we may be visited by as many as 150,000 people, more people than the city of Beaverton, more people than the city of Gresham coming down to spend Monday morning with us. There's been a considerable amount of information provided, certainly a tremendous amount of planning. There's also been some misinformation and some, I think some examples of where having an opportunity for, for city council here directly from the people that have been heavily involved with the city of Salem's planning and preparation would be helpful. So tonight, Mark Bechtel, our operations director for Public Works and Parks, is going to lead us off in a, in a brief presentation, followed by Fire Chief Diblock, who will speak to some of the broader emergency preparedness steps the city has taken. And then Lieutenant Upkeys from the Police Department will, will finish off and speak to the public safety planning and preparation that we've done. So thank you, thank you for the opportunity. And Mark?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Mark Bechtel. I'm the Public Works Operations Manager. And I want to give you a brief presentation on some of our preparations here at the city of Salem for the upcoming solar eclipse that will occur on Monday, August 21st, a week from today. I want to acknowledge that, and thank city manager Powers for acknowledging the amount of planning that's gone into this. We have spent several months, a number of months, planning for this event. And I would like to, again, acknowledge the, some of the folks involved. The effort's been led by Deputy Fire Chief Carl DeCarlo, Lieutenant Trevin Upkeys from the Police, Dan Brown from IT Information Technology, Mike Goddabaugh and Kenny Larson from the Public Information Office. All their efforts have been just invaluable in putting together the logistics of this event. This is called the Great American Eclipse because it's one of the few times ever that an eclipse has gone from one side of a country to the other, especially in this case, a continent. It'll start on Oregon coast and exit from the United States and South Carolina. What's interesting is that the entire event will take only 90 minutes to cross the entire country. So the umbra, or the shadow of totality, will take just that long to, to cross. The big question that's been asked is how many people are coming to Oregon and how many specifically to Salem? And I can't give you a very good answer because we really don't know. We have some ranges and there's a lot of variables involved. The Oregon Museum of Science and Industry, OMSI, has estimated that anywhere between 100,000 and 550,000 people could come either to or through Salem on, on that weekend and that day. So that's a large range for us to try to prepare any kind of logistical arrangements for. Some other variables that will affect that are the weather. And right now, the weather forecast for eclipse day changes about every 12 hours, which is of no use to us whatsoever. One day it's sunny, the next day it's rainy, the next day it's cloudy, the next day it's sunny again. So we'll just have to wait till we get closer. But weather will play a large factor in this. If, there's a lot of people that have made accommodations and they've paid a lot of money for those accommodations, and they're going to come and stay here regardless of the weather, it's whether they try to chase the eclipse or not. And for example, if you have a hotel room at the coast and it's cloudy that morning, you may try to make it into the valley that day to see the eclipse. Likewise, if it's cloudy or rainy here, people may try to get across the cascades into central Oregon during the overnight hours. If the forest fires get any worse in central or eastern Oregon, you may find people leaving central Oregon and trying to make it into the valley. Another thing that we can't predict is how many people are coming for the day. Any people, anywhere from Seattle to Sacramento can decide to come up for the day and make it back the same day without having to get hotel accommodations. And so how many people are going to leave their homes on Sunday and travel here overnight to be here by the morning, we don't know. But the weather will play a large factor in that. Things we're concerned about, obviously traffic congestion. The only way I can help you visualize what ODOT says is going to happen is they said, imagine a beaver's duck game at the same time on I-5 times 10. That's what we're probably looking at in a way of traffic congestion in the valley and all the state highways and our major arterials. That leaves us with areas of concern involving fire and EMS response. A lot of people may be coming to, to visit our parks, especially those people that come up for the day. We need to be able to access our pump stations and reservoirs during the day for utility operations. I think many of you have heard about the potential to have our cell phone system congested. That is a real concern, that as the weekend goes on and during that day, there may be spot outages with cell phone coverage. And then, well, we believe a lot of stores are indeed stocking up. You may find that some of your local stores may start running short of certain items during the weekend. So I would buy your, your Twinkies and chips early in the week, this week. Fuel, gas stations cannot store extra fuel. They only have what their tanks can hold. So again, we would recommend that maybe you top off your fuel tanks for your vehicles this week. They may start running short on regular gasoline during the weekend. Same thing with cash. ATMs may start running out of cash, so get a little cash this week as well. Because we have a range of possible attendance at this event, we've created a range of different plans. We call it our Tri-Level Response Plan. And basically, if it's a rainy day and we don't have a lot of people here, we will keep our response relatively low. If we have good weather and the crowds come in and they come in big, we'll ramp up our response accordingly. Right now, we're preparing as if it's a medium event. In the way of command, we're, we're using the incident command system through this event as if it were an emergency, although hopefully we won't, it won't be one, but we're going to be prepared in, in case it were to become one. We will have an incident commander, and then Public Works, Fire Police, the Public Information Office, and the city executive management will all be conferring and consulting with the incident commander. In Public Works, in particular, we'll be focusing on coordinating traffic operations, park operations, and utility operations, and being, being able to communicate with all of our partner agencies across the valley. One of the keys to providing services in this event is to be able to disperse our response forces throughout the city. Our traffic control trucks and, and other traffic assistance vehicles, signal repair, traffic signal repair vehicles will be dispersed throughout the community on eclipse day. We'll have five different utility repair teams dispersed throughout the community. We already have fire department resources spread throughout the city with our fire stations. We'll even have two tree crews dispersed in case we have any trees come down, or limbs come down. So we are, we are definitely trying to think of everything we can to spread our forces and have, especially have forces across the river in case our river bridges get congested. One of the areas that seems to continue to have misinformation is what ODOT or the city would do with bridges and streets. I want to assure everyone that there is, there are no plans to close down any of the bridges, vehicular or pedestrian. There are no plans to remove any lanes from operation. We need every drop of capacity in the, in the street system we can find for that weekend, and we intend to keep all of our facilities open. In the way of parks, we believe that most people are going to congregate in our larger parks because of the large open areas they provide amenities such as bathrooms, parking lots, and playgrounds and so forth. So these are the 13, the lucky 13 parks that we're going to be concentrating our resources on. We will be visiting every one of our 93 parks' properties with staff to make sure that all those parks are operating in good condition. And if we have to shift resources to any of the neighborhood parks, we'll certainly do so. There's been some issues and some, and some controversy about whether we're allowing camping in the parks or not, and I want to be very specific about this. With the kind of demand we're going to have on our park system, if we have good weather, we feel it's appropriate that on two nights, Saturday, the August 20th and Sunday, August 21st, that a, that people be allowed to spend the night in our parks. You'll notice I'm not using the word camping. I'm using the word spend the night. And I'm differentiating that by what you can do when you're in the park. What is allowed is people can bring a small tent, pop-up canopy, sleeping bags or blankets, lawn chairs, coolers, kind of like if you were trying to save a spot for a concert or you're waiting in line to buy tickets or something like that, just a light footprint kind of spend the night situation. What is absolutely going to be prohibited would be people bringing their vehicles onto our turf or ATVs. No RVs campers or tent trailers permitted, no large tents, certainly no fire pits or fire rings, no tailgating setups or field kitchens in the parks. And certainly, all the parks' rules will continue to be enforced. The only park rule that we are modifying is we're extending the hours of operations on those two nights to allow people to spend the night. I will also tell you that we are going to run the sprinkler systems vigorously Friday night and Saturday morning in our parks. And we are going to run the sprinkler system vigorously Monday night and Tuesday morning in our parks, for two reasons. One, we want to kind of limit the window of time that people are, are spending in time in our parks, and the grass is dry. We need to water the grass. So that, that, that is what we're going to do. Logistics. We could, if we had the best weather and the best attendance, have as many as 75,000 people in our park system. We have arranged for 115 additional portable chemical toilets, 16 water bottle filling stations, and right over here is one of our water bottle, water bottle filling stations. It is designed and built by Public Works staff right here in the city of Salem, and it can provide the ability to fill water bottles off of three spigots and from potable water in our parks. So that's a, one amenity we'll be providing. We will be installing 2,800 temporary signs telling people what they should or shouldn't do, can and can't do, where to go, things like that. Four of our parks will have medics assigned to them, beginning Sunday and then, and then certainly on Monday. Salem Police will have additional patrols and Lieutenant Upkeys can address that. Department will have the boat in the water, and, and then there will be an information tent at each of the major parks. We are, we have arranged even more garbage dumpsters than what you see there. We've, we've added another six... sixty yards of garbage dumpsters just today. We will have about ninety Public Works staff assigned to our park system over the weekend. We're also employing some new technologies that have not been available to us in the past during different events. We have the ability now to collect data, display it on GIS mapping, and that's an example of the dashboard that I'll have available to me at the Public Works Command Center, right down to how many porta-potties are full and need to be emptied, so. And, so what can the public do this week to prepare? We covered some of this already, but again, I would encourage, we would encourage, people will purchase a reasonable amount of groceries to get them through the weekend. If they need prescription medications filled, do so this week. Fill at least one of your gas tanks in your vehicle, so it's topped off, and get some cash. If you don't have a seventy-two-hour emergency kit, it's always a good thing to have, and why not have one starting now? And we are asking that you try to avoid driving on both Sunday, the twentieth, and Monday, the twenty-first, unless you're going to one of the many events in town here, there's seventy here in the immediate valley, private events. And then certainly, please obtain and wear certified eclipse safety viewing glasses, and enjoy the eclipse. And I want to tell you that we have been working very hard to train our staff, not that they need this training, but just to remind them that they are ambassadors to the city. We want everyone to come to Salem, enjoy this event. It's a once-in-a-lifetime event here in Salem, and we want them, we want everyone who comes here to love their experience and want to come back, just not all at the same time. So, at this point, I would also tell you that there's more information available. There's two websites available you can go to to get more information. During the eclipse weekend, as information becomes more important, there will be an information crawler at the bottom of the screen on Comcast Channel Twenty-One, CCTV, and there are a number of social media sites that you can go to to get updates. And this information is all available on the city's website. So, we welcome the eclipse, and at this time, I would turn it over to, I guess, to Chief
What else is left to say? Very thorough presentation, Mark. Fire Chief Mike Niblock, I just wanted to give you kind of the thirty-thousand-foot overview. As Mark mentioned, we've been preparing for around four months for this event, and citywide, so Public Works, Police, Fire, City Manager's Office, we're having a coordinated effort. I can tell you that we are prepared. We are going to be upstaffed, but we're also flexible. So, anytime you bring in more staff, you have to kind of evaluate if you need that staff, and so the key word is flexibility here for us. But, we're prepared for a lot of visitors, and as Mark mentioned, we're going to have paramedic staff in four of the main parks, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. Water rescue boat will be in service in the river Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. Those are all dependent on the number of people. If there's nobody on the river, then the resource will probably be pulled from the river. We just don't know who's going to bring their kayak and want to sit in the water. So, I want to thank all the folks that have spent four months preparing for this. One person that wasn't mentioned was Deputy Chief Gabe Bimosa, who's also going to be assisting with PIO duties every day. If we have to open our emergency operations center, I'll be assuming command for the city with the RED team, which is a group of about twenty-some folks in the city that are trained on how to run the emergency operations center. Right now, I don't perceive that being an eventuality unless something major happens. I think this is going to be more like Busy Friday with a lot of traffic, and my advice to my wife was, "Stay off the roads." It's going to be really busy, and it's going to take you a long time to get anywhere, so we're asking people to be patient as well. We do have a four-tier communication plan, so if cellphones happen to be sketchy, we can talk on the radio, we can talk on the satellite phones, we have preemptive cell service that allows us to have priority. So, we've got a lot of communication methods in place. We have a comprehensive transportation plan, routes that will be, try to be kept flowing as much as possible for emergency traffic. We're operating, much like the other departments, West Salem really has an island. We're going to have full staffing over there to be able to handle a full alarm assignment on the west side of the river without driving across the bridges. And we also have a plan in place, if need be, we can use the railroad bridge to transport people back and forth across the river. So, we're not closing anything, but if we need to use it, we'll have some volunteers down there that can get people off the bridge, and we can drive a vehicle across that bridge at walking pace if need be. So, I believe we're prepared. There's some things we don't know, we don't know how many people are going to come, and that really is dependent on weather, and a lot of other factors that none of us control, and it just depends on what day you're watching the news, what they're telling you it's going to be. So, we're expecting this to be an enjoyable event. I think we're ready for whatever visitors show up. We want to have a, present a good face for Salem, and hopefully they want to come back and visit us again at some point. So, and I'm happy to answer, I don't know if Trevin is going to present, and then I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Good evening, I'm Lieutenant Trevin Upkeys with Salem Police. I've been our lead planner and working diligently with my cohort here. So, the city of Salem PD, we are planning on a fun and well-attended event. Our priorities are going to be for life, property, and then to create an environment that visitors and citizens alike feel safe being out in public and viewing the event. We have upstaffed our department with the flexibility, again, to call in more people if necessary. We're prepared for kind of that expanded use of our services and other services, just due to the number of people here. And then, we have our backup plans in case anything catastrophic occurs, at which we can bring in more resources, ranging from people to equipment. So, we feel that we're prepared and ready, and we do not expect anything really out of the ordinary that would cause alarm for people to be here. We think this is going to be a very good place and very safe for our community and visitors coming in to participate in this amazing event. And then I can also answer any other detailed questions that anyone might have.
Well, that's the end of the presentation. Are there any questions from councilors? Yes, Counselor K.
It's my understanding that the CERT team has also been activated as a preparation for this event, is that?
That's correct. We're going to use CERT members as gateway people for the walk bridge, if we need to use that as an accessway for emergency vehicles. We're also going to use CERT members as a phone bank. We're going to set up a phone bank with a telephone number to try to relieve some of the phone calls to Public Works Dispatch and non-emergency dispatch that are eclipse-related information. So, if somebody just wants to know something about the eclipse or whatever, they'll have a Q&amp;A sheet. We'll have six lines available, so hopefully they won't get overwhelmed with that, but they'll be able to call that number, ask a quick question, if they don't know it, we can get back to them, so that'll relieve some of the pressure. We're going to use CERT people in that manner.
Counselor Kaiser.
Thank you for the thorough presentation. At my agency, we've been affectionately referring to the eclipse as the apocalypse, but I like "our eclipse," it's pretty nice. I hope the presentation helps dispel some of the myths that Salem's totally unprepared, because I've been hearing that a lot from folks. City's not prepared, they were caught off guard, and it's not, we've been doing this since April. And that's about the time that I started telling neighborhood associations that I went to that we've been doing this since April. And we don't know what's going to happen, but we're preparing as best we can. One of my questions I did have, because it comes up a lot, are the parks going to be staffed twenty-four-seven for that Saturday, Sunday, Monday?
We are going to have a small number of park staff, staffing the parks beginning Friday night. We will then have more on Saturday, including some Saturday night, and then we'll have a very strong presence in those thirteen major parks, all day Sunday, Sunday night, Monday, and into Monday night, as long as necessary.
I would add too, thank you for the vote of confidence there, for being prepared. There's been a lot of hype about this, and a lot of misinformation, and quite frankly, there's been some folks from outside agencies, and I won't name any, that have maybe taken advantage of this to show why they're important. There's no better way to say it than that, but we are prepared, this isn't our first rodeo. We do emergency management all the time. I'm confident that we're ready for this. You can what if, you know, what if this happens, what if that happens? That's what we do every day, we manage crisis, and we adapt and overcome, so we're ready.
Counselor Andrews.
Thank you very much, I agree with Counselor Kaiser. There's been a lot of angst, I should say, in my ward about people talking to me, and many of those people who email me or call me, I send them copies of various bits of information the city manager and other people have sent out for the planning. I'm wondering if it is possible to somehow put online Mr. Bechtel, and it looks like Mr. Larson's already saying it is, the PowerPoint you presented today might be a nice thing to go online. Kenny?
Go ahead. Kenny Larson, Communications Community Engagement Manager. I plan on, well, this video, of course, is live now, we've got lots of people watching.
Hundreds, thousands.
And this, the whole city council meeting video will obviously be available immediately afterwards. Tomorrow, I plan on clipping out this presentation and posting that as its own video.
Terrific.
To, so people who want to see just the eclipse stuff have an easy way to do that.
Thank you. That's an excellent idea, if I have a few more.
Yes.
And along in those lines, Mr. Bechtel, I'm wondering if you could put back up that citywide map that had triangles, and squares, and circles, but I wasn't, well, yeah, I wasn't quite sure what those were. But, obviously, there are things that are spread across the city, but maybe you could explain the different colors.
They are. I didn't do a full legend because, in the interest of time, I didn't think you'd have time to read it and decipher it, but essentially, the red boxes are our fire stations. The blue ovals are where we're going to station, the five utility repair and response teams. The triangles, the golden triangles, are where some of our traffic response trucks are going to be. Those traffic response trucks have the variable message boards that go up and give messages, and have cones and barricades. We'll also have the ability to dispense some fuel if people run out of gas, we have the ability to give them water if their radiators overheat, and they have tow cables if we need to kind of get them out of the way, so.
You're even doing better than you thought, because I count six blue dots, not five.
Yes, yes, that's because one team is split between the Willow Lake Treatment Plant and the River Road Weather Facility.
Then I am interested in your discussion of RV campers, RVs and campers not in the parks, does that include the parking lots?
If they can fit into a regular space, they're welcome, but if they take up more than that, they're not.
Okay. You know, I commend you for your thorough planning, you know. I suppose on one end of the scale, this could be a Y2K thing, but I don't think it really is. I suppose also on the other, the same end of that scale, it could be a Yogi Bear thing. Nobody goes there anymore, it's too crowded, so we'll see what happens, but I think you're very well-prepared, and, you know, I'm sure it'll go well. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, great.
Mr. Mayor, may I add one more thing? The one thing that we didn't talk about is, we didn't do this in a vacuum either. We're working with Marion County, we're working with the hospital, we're working with all the preparedness folks, so we're all, we're coordinated there. We've provided radios to our medical program director at the hospital, and some of the people in the emergency rooms, so they have direct communication with the fire department during the events. It's critical that they have a short turnaround time for their ambulances, but if we have more people in town, we're going to have more calls, and so we need to have efficiencies all the way around, so we've been working very closely with them, and they've been a good partner. The last thing I would add is the burn ban is still in effect until at least the twenty-second of August. We're going to leave the burn ban in effect throughout the eclipse with all these extra visitors in town. We're going to try to limit the number of wildland fires we have during the event, even though we had one day of rain in the last fifty-seven days, it's still dry out there.
What's a burn ban mean? Say what the...
Means no recreational burning whatsoever in the city, no fire pits. You can still do barbecues, but no fire pits or any recreational burning like that at all.
Okay, thank you. I'm just thinking about my barbecue.
Your barbecue's okay.
I'm getting a little nervous with all that chicken. Counselor Hoy.
I just wanted to thank the staff for the amazing job of preparation. I've heard some criticism from members of the public regarding the decision to allow camping or people to spend the night in the parks, and I have explained it in a way that, look, the city is acknowledging and managing the inevitable. It's not like it's some major policy shift, it's just managing and acknowledging the inevitable. People are going to be there, so we're making the best of it, and hopefully making it into a great event. I just really thank you for your thoughtful preparation, the garbage cans, the porta-potties, and that sort of thing, I think it's excellent, thank you.
Thank you, and you're correct, that was our approach, we're trying to manage the inevitable. Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to acknowledge, I left off a person, Roger Stevenson is the city's emergency preparedness manager, and he has relentlessly trained us in emergency management for many, many years, and it's paying off.
Okay, great. Thumbs up Nancy, what do you think? Excellent, thank you. Nancy contacted me about this, and I thought had a lot of very, very good questions, including who's in charge of this place, and I think we found out, so I, thank you Nancy. Okay, any other questions from anybody? We're going to move on then. Let me find my place here. Public comment, Linda, this is, I'm going to remind you all, you have three minutes. The light will go orange, that means you have one minute, the light will go red, just stop, just stop, right then and there, and I'll, no matter where you are, or I'll ask you to. It's always more polite if you do it yourself. Linda, you're up.
Hi, I'm Linda Egan, and I live in Ward Eight. Mayor and Council, we have four presenters who will be testifying tonight, and will be happy to take questions after we have all finished. Councilor Anderson took to Facebook on July twenty-sixth to double down on his speech at city council on July twenty-fourth, where he spoke of the importance of civility in public meetings. His comments were framed as a response to a recent West Salem Neighborhood Association meeting, which he did not attend, but which he claimed had suffered from a series of totally inappropriate vocal and physical disturbances instigated by folks who support a new bridge. Unfortunately, Councilor Anderson didn't do his homework about the actual events of the meeting he chose to describe. He labeled the new bridge supporters as "instigators of disturbances," having only talked with people on his side of the bridge issues, with the notable exception of Council Lewis, whose testimony he misrepresented. As usual, when a person listens to one side of a story and neglects the other side, they come to a biased conclusion. Most parents understand that a child running to them to tattle on their siblings may likely be painted an inaccurate picture. They know it will be important to talk with the other before deciding what really happened. Being a trial lawyer, one would think that Council, Councilor Anderson understands the importance of hearing both sides of a case before passing judgment. Unsurprisingly, the reality of what transpired at the West Salem Neighborhood Association meeting on July seventeen is very different from the harrowing reports Councilor Anderson received from his allies. His assertion of disturbances investigated by folks who support a new bridge was a deliberate falsehood. Had Councilor Anderson asked anyone involved with the pro-bridge side, we would have gladly explained the actual events. But, to set the record straight, we will do so now. Thank you.
Angela Levinhagen?
Good job.
Ah, thanks. I had some alternative, I had some alternative pronunciations.
I'm super excited, this is my second meeting, and there's so many awesome, positive things going on here, I love it. My name is Angie Levinhagen, I am a member of Ward Eight, teacher and resident, and I wanted to continue. The West Salem Neighborhood Association meeting on July seventeenth was calm, courteous, and informative for about two hours and twenty minutes. At the very end of the meeting, Mike Evans requested that the co-chairs take a few minutes to explain the West Salem Neighborhood Association... to explain the West Salem Neighborhood Association nomination and election process, which was on the agenda as an information item. The co-chairs asked the parliamentarian, E.M. Easterly, to explain the process. He then talked about what had happened over the last 30 years, but didn't address what the process would be this time. Craig Evans asked him politely, can you tell us what the process will be this time? Mr. Easterly returned, turned back to the co-chairs, who started talking about possible ways that they may do it, or made statements including, we may start taking nominations at the next two meetings, and we may take them from the floor on October 16th. Mike remarked calmly, it seems impossible to believe that there is no process. At that point, the parliamentarian charged at him, stopping within inches of his face, and yelled at the top of his lungs, sit down. I don't even do that in my kindergarten class. Mr. Easterly processed, proceeded to stand there menacingly with his face nearly touching mics for about 10 seconds. Finally, another community member came in between them, telling the parliamentarian to move back. His response, this response to an honest comment was very unprofessional and led to many of the remaining West Salem Neighborhood Association members to speak up in shock when Mr., with Mr. Easterly's behavior. Co-chair Steve Anderson immediately declared the meeting adjourned. Craig used a microphone from the podium to express his frustration with not being able to get a straight answer about such an important process. Co-chair Anderson aggressively and repeatedly tried to grab the microphone from Craig until the same community member came between them again and, and Mike, between the parliamentarian and Mike, and did the same thing to stop this aggression, asking Mr. Anderson to step back. Having gathered his composure, Mr. Easterly apologized publicly for his aggression, aggressive actions, which Mike immediately and publicly accepted. After a few minutes of banter back and forth from the West Salem Neighborhood Association co-chairs and the audience, the meeting broke up. While this was not the model of decorum Counselor Anderson's characterized of there being disturbances investigated by folks who support a new bridge is exactly the opposite of what happened. It was not the new bridge supporters who were instigating and out of control, but the West Salem Neighborhood Association parliamentarian and co-chairs, when asked to tell their community and the nomination, went about the nomination and election process.
Angela, the light is red.
Pardon?
The light's red. I know, I know.
Wasn't looking up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. May I ask for a point of order?
Yes.
I believe Agenda Item Two is public comment. Come out on Agenda Items Other Than Public Carings and Deliberations.
Yeah, they're a combined list tonight.
Are they a combined?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify our procedure.
Sure. I understand, and it's, it's the list I've got, that's the list I'm working with. Craig Evans.
Thank you. I'm Craig Evans. I'm also resident of Ward Eight. To continue, it is unfortunate that a sitting city councilor would choose to insert himself in a situation where he was not personally present and to make statements characterizing what happened after only talking to people on his side of an important issue. Pretending to be the voice of civility while blaming a large group of people he's never talked with is not an example of civility, but of partiality. Regrettably, Counselor Anderson's lesson on civility seemed to be lost on himself. Certainly, nobody would consider misrepresenting the testimony of a colleague on the city council as civil behavior. That is precisely what Counselor Anderson did with his public statements and Facebook posts regarding Counselor Lewis's account of what occurred at the West Salem Neighborhood Association meeting. Counselor Anderson used a lawyerly crafted statement to make it appear that Counselor Lewis agreed with the reports that Counselor Anderson had sought from his allies. Worse yet, Counselor Lewis made it clear that this was not correct, objecting to his characterizations immediately after Counselor Anderson read his statement at the city council meeting. Did this stop Counselor Anderson from repeating his misrepresentations on Facebook two days later? No. Apparently, knowingly misrepresenting his colleagues' statements in the interest of smearing the opposing side of the debate about the bridge fits within Counselor Anderson's definition of civil discourse. In the interest of actual civility, we believe Counselor Anderson should apologize for his conduct and listen to people who were present at the meeting, but not on his side of the bridge issue. As Counselor Anderson advised in his oral and written lectures on civility, this is not the type of behavior which should be allowed to pass unnoticed. It must be stopped now.
Mike Evans.
Mike Evans, Ward Eight. Being bullied by Mr. Easterly at the Wesna meeting on July 17th was frightening and embarrassing. Having accepted his apology, I thought this unfortunate experience was over. I was dismayed to hear Counselor Anderson compounding this abuse at the next city council meeting and making me out to be the aggressor, when this was the opposite of the truth. Even after Counselor Lewis, who witnessed my ordeal, objected, Counselor Anderson took his abuse further by again publicly blaming the new bridge supporters as instigators on his Facebook post. This is not about me, however, but about the thousands of people whose concerns Counselor Anderson has casually painted as being based primarily on emotions without much critical analysis. While we may not be bridge or traffic engineers, we're not, as he implies, inferior thinkers. So, let me tell you who we are. The people who support the bridge are hard-working residents who believe our city staff, ODOT engineers, and multiple local governing bodies have done a thorough job of critical analysis over the past 11 years and $8 million. They believe we have a good plan, and the time for analyzing it is over. It's time to build it now. With over 2,400 signatures on our petition, we are incredible, an incredibly diverse group. We're moms and dads who need to get to work in the morning and want to make it to our children's sporting events and dance recitals. We're single parents who try to drop one child off at daycare and the other at school while making it to work on time. We're nurses, firefighters, police officers, state employees, union members, business owners, Democrats, Republicans, independents. We are people who live in Counselor Anderson's ward and take our son with severe Asperger's across the bridge to his program at Walker Middle School every morning. We're elementary teachers who can't leave our classroom to pick up our own child when parents are stuck in traffic trying to pick up theirs. Counselor Anderson, we spoke with you at the Strategic Planning Open House in June and invited you to meet with us. You've not responded to that request, but have chosen instead to vilify us in the name of civility. Mr. Easterly had the decency to apologize after he allowed his emotions to get the better of him. You, on the other hand, used your position to deliver a carefully crafted smear to try to discredit us. Will you now apologize for this behavior and agree to meet with us and try to understand our perspective?
Thank you. Thank you. Michael Slater.
I really can't follow that. I'm Michael Slater, Ward Seven. Good evening, Mayor Bennett, councilors, and members of the city staff. I'm here to comment today on the Urban Forest Strategic Plan. Hopefully, something that we can all agree on. I want to begin by thanking those city leaders who eight or nine years ago initiated the work on Salem's urban forest. In light of our increasing awareness of the pace and damage of climate change and growing knowledge of the impact of trees on public health, safety, and well-being, the decision to develop an urban, an urban forest plan seems especially prescient. In the past several years, the city conducted a tree canopy analysis that found Salem has a very low 18% tree canopy. Created an urban forestry task force that developed a set of recommendations and adopted a tree canopy goal of 23%. They also enacted a tree ordinance covering the city-owned trees and planted nearly 500 large diameter shade trees, as well as several thousand small diameter trees in repairing zones. I think this sets a very good stage for more ambitious program moving forward. I think there are three, three critical components to the next step on expanding our urban forest. First, the strategic plan, which calls, which is really a list of 144 actions organized under a set of goals, and I'm very sorry the staff had to receive that. 144 is a lot to manage. It's now time to move forward with one of those recommendations, which was the development of a written management plan. It is impossible to really work off of a list of 144 items, but instead, we need a consistent management plan that especially targets planting trees by neighborhood. We have a number of neighborhoods in the city that have less than 15% tree canopy, particularly in the northern and eastern parts of the city. Second, any attempt to approve the urban forest will benefit from a systematic tree survey, which we've not undertaken before. That includes the location, size, and species of the trees. To the extent possible, we should take advantage of technology and public interest to capture data on trees in private ownership. And there are a number of cities that have very good examples of crowdsourced tree maps. San Francisco is just one example, but others as well. Finally, we need to recognize that the majority of the tree canopy and plantable lands are in private ownership. We're going to have, we're going to have a difficult time achieving our canopy goals without addressing trees on private land, both encouraging landowners to conserve large mature trees, but also planting trees in areas with low, with low density. Trees are an aesthetic marvel and certainly add property value and appeal to our neighborhoods, but more importantly, they are a critical component of public health, and they need the same level of attention that we provide to other elements of the city's infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn O'Brien.
Mayor Bennett, councilors, my name's Carolyn O'Brien. My address is 1692 Carroller Court Northeast. I'm speaking tonight as a member of the local chapter of 350.org, which is a national climate action group. Tonight, I want to speak, as Mike did, about the city's goal regarding the tree canopy in Salem. I've found many, many, many benefits of having trees in your yard in the city. I'll just name a few. Trees can cool down the streets. I know all of you have sought shade under a tree on a hot day. Trees help the residents of the city conserve energy. When trees are placed carefully around homes, it can reduce the need for air conditioning. This also helps reduce carbon emissions and other harmful pollutants. Trees save water. They decrease evaporation from lawns, flower beds. Trees help the soil erosion by trapping the moisture in their roots. Trees are a resource that continue to give a long, many years after they're planted. It's a big investment to begin with, but nobody can invest money and get the kind of continuous return for many, many, many years without much more input, and that's what trees can do. I urge the Environmental Action Plan Committee to consider this as part of the action plan, because this will go a long, long way to helping reduce carbon emissions in the city. As I said, trees are investment that just continues to bring returns for many, many years. I also, though, urge for a good management plan, because my sister lives in Kaiser. In a long Lockhaven, they planted numerous trees and didn't water them well, and there's one tree left, a lone survivor that somehow managed to make it. There needs to be a management, too, because that was such a waste. It still hurts me when I drive by that street and there's only that one lone tree there. When my family from Texas visits, you know, people in Texas think everything they've got there is bigger than everybody else, but they marvel over the trees. They're constantly talking about how big and tall the trees are. So, it's a good, good thing to do, good investment with very good long-term returns. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Damon Talbot.
Good evening, Damon Talbot, Ward Five. And first, I want to thank the city for their presentation about the eclipse tonight. That's what I was going to speak on, and luckily, they covered none of what I planned to cover, so they didn't steal my thunder, but I appreciate what they did speak about. I think that will help a lot of the fears I've been seeing online that people have been addressing. What I wanted to make note of is, we are so lucky to be part of this event. I have several friends that are astronomers that have literally traveled the world to go visit places where there'd be total eclipses, places like Australia, islands in the Pacific. And we just have to walk out our front doors next Monday, and we'll be able to see it. And that is something that is very, very special. I spoke to them. They tell me that it's akin to seeing your first child born. Any of you that are parents may know what that's like. And I've not seen an eclipse yet, so believe me, I probably won't sleep this next week because I'm extremely excited. I'm a little worried that my pocketbook's going to start being ready for 2024 when another eclipse comes through America. Again, as I said, I've been online a lot researching the eclipse, not just for locally, but for the whole path of the eclipse. In doing so, I've been on forums and, you know, like we've been talking, there's a lot of people just in Oregon coming, but I know of a family of five that are coming to Salem from Germany to see the eclipse. I know a family of four that are coming, driving up in a motorhome from Texas to see the eclipse here in Salem. So, it's not just a bunch of people that are going to get together in our parks just to party and have a time. These are working families. They are businessmen. They are nerds like me that like astronomy. And, you know, we're just lucky that we live here. I really hope that our community will be a little more open to having our visitors. Yes, it's going to be difficult. We're going to have traffic. We're going to have some issues to deal with. The city did the best they could by opening the parks. I think it was the right choice. It'll eliminate people from just parking in our neighborhoods. They'll now have central places to go. And when you see these people, be welcoming. If they have any questions about where to eat, give them some advice, you know, and next Monday morning, make sure that you take a little time off from what you're ever doing and go outside and experience this with our whole community and the rest of the country, because we don't have to go anywhere. It's coming to us, whether we like it or not. I just hope everyone enjoys it as much as I hope I will. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Joyce Judy.
Wait, wait.
Oops, sorry. I'm sorry, Jim.
Want to come back just a second? Comment, one, I really appreciate your words of welcoming. It is going to be a traumatic thing for some, but the idea that this gives the Salem, the citizens of Salem an opportunity to really show what they are in welcoming people, I think is a great idea. The other thing I wanted to say is I've witnessed a full eclipse in 1979 in the Portland area, and I also witnessed the birth of my son. There's no comparison.
Well, maybe it's the fact that a lot of the people I've talked to are astronomy nuts.
Eclipse might be a cool thing, and I'm looking forward to it, but there's nothing more miraculous than seeing a birth.
But I thank you for your kind words, and I agree, you know, Salem, our city slogan is supposed to be shalom, and that we're welcoming, and we passed inclusivity this year. And unfortunately, when the city opened up the parks, I saw a lot of the community members weren't really seeming too inclusive and welcoming at that point, and I hope that this presentation this evening will turn that around, both with the city addressed with how they are preparing and that, you know, we will be welcoming to our visitors not just from Oregon, but from literally around the world. Appreciate it.
There was a really short TED Talk that I just saw about total eclipses, and it's funny, because your candor matches the gentleman who did the TED Talk. He said, I didn't really think it was a big deal, and now I've become an eclipse chaser. And he's advocating for it to become a national holiday. He witnessed his first after, after his mother had passed away, and he said, the way he kind of described it was, you know, life is short and, but look at what we're a part of. And when the eclipse happens, time stands still and, and we can see what beauty, even though it's temporary, we're all a part of.
Yes, I've seen that TED Talk as well, and if anyone wants to look on YouTube, I believe it's called "You Owe It to Yourself to See a Total Eclipse." So, have a look at that, and if you're not inspired by my speech and any other things you've heard, he probably will get you there. Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We should all make a pot of coffee and take it out, because the coffee dukes are going to be lined up as well.
Yeah.
Joyce.
Hello, my name is Joyce.
Hello, my name is Joyce Judy. I'm from Ward 6, and I wanted to thank you, Mayor Bennett, and city councilors and staff for the opportunity to speak. I have attended both the Affordable Housing Homelessness and Social Services work groups, and unfortunately, did not know that they had moved it earlier, so I'm offering comments on that now. I'm pleased to see that you guys are going to put money, a one and a half million dollars or thereabouts, towards this huge issue. But I also wanted to ask you a proportion that will also go to assist people who are currently housed but need affordable housing because their existing housing is, they're being priced out of their housing. Currently, there is no deposit or moving expense help for people who sign up for affordable housing. So if they get the call and they don't have the money to move, then they have to pass on that housing. Then they may become homeless. We need to make certain that we don't create new homeless people. Additionally, on another item, I wanted to say that along with Michael Slater, I also support the extension of the tree canopy. Salem's objective is to get to 23% canopy. This should not be an average, as some areas do have more than 23%. My neighborhood is North Gate, Ward 5, and we only have a 9.5% canopy, and Mill Creek is even lower. First, we need to stop allowing builders from removing trees, even if they plan to replace them, as what they put in often doesn't survive, or worse, they don't even comply. Mature trees should not be removed, period. Let's get busy adding high-growth trees in North Creek and Mill Creek. And lastly, I wanted to speak with respect to the signage issue.
That's a public hearing, Joyce, and we'll have to have you speak under public hearing. I'm sorry.
I can't speak to that?
Not now.
Later.
Yeah, later.
Okay, later.
Yes. We'll put you out on the list. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you very much. Oh, sorry.
This isn't so much a question, but more of a comment. I just wanted to thank all of you who spoke to the tree canopy issue, living in Ward 6, where we have, I think, my three neighborhood associations are the lowest density in the city in terms of tree canopy. It's really a critical issue. I was really pleased to participate with Friends of Trees earlier this year to plant some trees in McKay Park. I know they're going to be doing the same thing in Weathers Park coming up this year, so I would encourage anybody who's watching and cares about this issue, watch for those opportunities to volunteer. It's really a fun day where you go out, they bring, they give you all the tools, the gloves and everything you need to help plant it. They teach you how to plant a tree. They teach you all of the various aspects that go into planting a healthy tree, and I really encourage people to do that. It's really worthwhile, and I think it's for the greater good.
The unfortunate thing is that they put a lot of trees in parks, but they don't put them on streets. I absolutely love Summer Street because of the beautiful canopy that goes down that street. You know, go down Portland, and you don't see the same kind of canopy by any stretch. So I'd like to see more trees on streets, not just in parks.
I agree with you there. If you look at the meeting material from tonight, and you'll see some of the plantings that Friends of Trees have done, they do concentrate on parks, but they also do it in other areas, and you'll see that there is some concentration on streets and various areas.
Okay.
Council Nanki.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down, Ms. Judy. In regards to Ward 5 and Ward 3, if you look at the colors on that map, we are very low. We are also the largest industrial districts in the city, and I was actually going to hit staff up to try to modify that map some to identify those industrial zones, because they can have some trees, but everything has to go when they actually do original construction, and then there's not really a lot of landscape after the fact. And we have the prison as well. I'm sure they don't want a lot of trees up close to their buildings either, so.
Yeah.
So I was going to look at, see if we could modify that up to give us a little more clarity and make those numbers a little more reflective.
And requiring better landscaping on the part of industrial businesses that go in and just saying, "Okay, well, I'm going to have a lovely dirt parking lot," or whatever, requiring them to have better landscaping, I think, would be a goal that you guys should work towards.
Well, having worked in all of the industrial areas around town, I know I like trees to park my car in shade.
Right.
And you don't get a lot of that in a lot of the industrial zones.
Exactly. Okay, thank you very much. That's it. Anyone else want to speak under public comment? Yes.
Good evening. My name's Brian Bowles. I live in Ward 8. Thank you for letting me speak, even though I didn't sign up. So I'm just here also just to keep the bug in everyone's ear about the importance of building another bridge. I know that might be getting old already. I'm not going to speak about anything that happened at the West Salem neighborhood thing. I wasn't there. I just want to more pose a question to the councilors here that don't favor another bridge. I like to think that before we go any further in this issue, and it gets more and more heated or whatever, that maybe before we move on, that we can maybe try to figure out some of these differences we have. And I'm curious, and I'm posing a question to the councilors who oppose a bridge right now, to think about and evaluate their reasons for opposing a bridge. I understand that finances is a big issue. I know that, and I would like to put that one aside. We all know that that's a big one, but let's just in our happy little world here, let's imagine that if we all were on the same page here, and we could get the finances for our new bridge, what other issues are stopping you guys from supporting another bridge? That's really my question to you guys tonight, because I like the idea of, hopefully, we can at least work through some of those issues. I've been studying these maps ever since I joined the group. I've been studying Google Earth Maps and everything, trying to figure out the best way to build this bridge, even if it modifies the plan a little bit so that we have maximum amount of relief from the current road plan that we have, but minimal impact on the environment and existing businesses and homes. So anyway, I'm all about compromise and working things out, and I really am curious to hear either tonight or in future meetings why some of you guys oppose that bridge.
Thank you very much. I'm sure you'll hear a lot about it in future meetings.[1048.58][1048.58](Laughter). You will, I'm sure. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Allen.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Allen Scott. I'm in Ward 1, and I'm going to make this really short, but don't worry about that because I'll be back later with the public hearing thing. But listening to the comments about the tree canopy reminds me that years ago, there was a lot of discussion, and I thought there was even a movement to improve Portland Road with trees in the median and that sort of thing, kind of like Mission, kind of making it a more welcome entry to the city, because it is southbound traffic. That's the first entry into the city. So that's it. You'll hear more later.
Phase 1 has trees in the middle.
One tree's in the middle of Portland Road. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much.
It's a complex comment, I know, but thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, great. Thank you. We'll close public comment, and we'll go to the consent calendar.
I move approval of the consent calendar with the following polls. 3.2B by Counselor Hoy. 3.3B by Counselor Anderson. And 3.3F by Counselor Hoy.
Just a second.
Council Nanki.
I'd just like to register a no vote on 3.3E on the collective bargaining for the purpose of Kelly Days, which you know I'm not a fan of.
Which one?
Kelly Days?
3.3E.
Yeah.
Did we change the number?
Is that the?
No, that's right. You're correct.
You're right.
You're speaking to the correct one. Is that recorder, do you have his no vote recorded? He's going to vote no on E.
No, that's right. That's not the same one I was looking at online.
Okay, the online's different than the printed.
Yeah, because now it says it's a police facility site.
3.3E is the firefighter's contract.
Okay.
Do they all get? We know which one you're talking about.
We know what you're talking about.
We're all using the old.
I'm looking online.
The printed one's different, yeah.
You'd have to be with the latest, latest version. We're following you here. We know what you're talking about.
Okay, so my poll self could change?
And we know what you're pulling. We'll make sure you get to talk about it.
And I thought one of them, I said no, but I'm not sure which one you've referred to now because I'm looking online. You're all right.
You have Shire's Properties. Do you want that one?
Yes.
Okay, and you also have Council Transit Committee.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, want both?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, now I'm getting concerned, too. I want to pull the Commercial Vista Court or whatever number that is.
That's 3.3B.
Okay, okay, good.
We're in good shape.
Yes. Do you want me to speak to this?
Yeah, why don't you get everything else?
Okay, now that I screwed that totally up. What happened was when we pulled the forestry strategic plan and put it in the information items, you got changed there, but anybody who had the written one.
Didn't get changed.
Didn't get changed. So that's what happened.
Why you go online?
Yes. Yeah, well, that's, you know, I'm an old guy. I'm stuck with the paperwork. So the items in the consent calendar are, we have the July 24 Council Minutes. We have a resolution that rescinds a resolution made in 1979 regarding parking restrictions on Candelaria Boulevard South. We, even Counselor Nanki was not on the council then. We have an intergovernment agreement that authorizes a city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the U.S. Department of Justice Drug Enforcement Administration and the City of Salem for the operation of a narcotics task force. In this, basically, we have three members of the police department that will serve in conjunction with the DEA Task Force for Narcotics Task Force in the city, and they pay for the overtime pay involved with that. That's been ongoing for 20 years. We have a Kubler Improvement Agreement between the City of Salem and the Department of Administrative Services that basically outlines who is going to be responsible for 2,700 feet of Kubler Boulevard Southeast improvements along the Mill Creek Corporate Center frontage, and there's a partial release of a constructional deferment agreement to DAS, the Department of Administrative Services, and the future property owner after closing on the sale of Site A of the Corporate Center, if that enlightens you at all. We also have a collective bargaining agreement. We approve a two-year collective bargaining agreement between the City and the Salem Professional Firefighters, the International Association of Firefighters, Local 314 of the AFL-CIO, which includes the merger of a previously separate bargaining unit for battalion chiefs into the main International Association of Firefighters unit for the remainder of the agreement period from July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2019. And finally, we've got the grant agreement between the Housing Authority of the City of Salem and the City of Salem for the Homeless Rental Assistant Program, where we, the City of Salem, is granting 1.4 million of committed funds that are in the budget for this year to the Housing Authority for the Homeless Rental Assistant Program we talked about previously.
Very good. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Okay, we'll go to public hearings.
The City Council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public testimony regarding amendments to the SIGN Code, Salem Revised Code Chapter 900. The criteria applicable to the proposed amendment are SRC 110.085 and Statewide Planning Goal 1. Testimony must be directed toward the identified criteria or other criteria the person believes to apply to the decision. A failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue may preclude appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. The hearing will be conducted with a staff presentation first, followed by other interested persons.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and members of council. My name's Aaron Panko with the Planning Division, and tonight, we're talking about the SIGN Code. And before getting into the presentation, I'd like to talk a little bit about what SIGN is. And in our code, a SIGN means any structure, board, poster, placard, or device which contains or prizes a design or display designed, used, or intended to attract the attention of the public. So virtually any attention- attracting device could be considered a SIGN under the code. There are certain things that the city can regulate under the SIGN Code. We can regulate the size of signs, where they're placed, how they're attached to buildings or the ground, and the number of signs that can be displayed on a property. For electronic display signs, we can regulate how bright the display is and how quickly the display can change. The city cannot regulate signs based on their content. So the proposed amendment does a few things. There are some general housekeeping items that are included in this amendment. We're updating the title of our overlay zones in the SIGN Code to match the UDC, which was adopted back in 2014, for consistency. There's a section in there that talks about reducing the number of paper copies that are required to be submitted to the PAC Center. Current code requires two paper copies. Only one copy is really needed with the way that we scan and do things electronically. Some other things that are included in the amendment include exempting public art and art markers, as well as public murals, which are already exempt from our SIGN Code. And then the code creates a measurable brightness standard for electronic display signs. The current standard involves the use of judgment on behalf of staff. This new standard that we're proposing is measurable. It tells you how far away from the SIGN to collect that information. It gives us a measurable standard. So under the current code, SIGN adjustments can be granted for up to 10% of an applicable height or display surface size standard. The proposed amendment will create two classes for SIGN adjustments and establish approval criteria similar to what was done back in 2014 with the Unified Development Code. So here's an example. On the lower right side is a sign, it's a directional sign that's facing Lancaster Drive for Kaiser Permanente. In this case, the SIGN Code restricted the size of the sign to four square feet and only 30 inches in height. This sign was frequently missed and became a cause of confusion to visitors of the site. On the left is a sign approximately 10 square feet in size and 6 feet in height, which provides more visibility to the site entrance. Because of the degree of adjustment was more than 10%, in this case, a variance was required prior to installation of the sign. The proposed adjustment will simplify the review for similar situations in the future. The SIGN variance process will remain in place and could be used as an alternative if there's ever cases where the adjustment criteria can't be met or otherwise won't Testimony was received from an industry representative during the Planning Commission public hearing, requesting to reduce the frequency that electronic display can be changed from one hour to 30 seconds. Currently, in all industrial zones, public zones, and most commercial zones, electronic display signs can change displays no more frequently than once every eight seconds. For the commercial office, neighborhood commercial, neighborhood center mixed-use, and fairview mixed-use zones, the change in display cannot occur more than once every hour. The actual change in display has to be either a fade or instantaneous change. Animation, scrolling, dissolve, or other display effects are prohibited. Planning Commission found that the commercial office, neighborhood commercial, neighborhood center mixed-use, and fairview mixed-use zones are more closely aligned with commercial zones, which allow that eight-second change time, rather than residential zones, which restricts the change time to once per hour. And finally, the proposed amendment removes the requirement for a temporary SIGN permit for temporary SIGN displays, but otherwise retains all of our current standards regulating temporary signs. The first type of temporary SIGN, probably the most common that's seen out there, includes the lawn SIGN, rigid SIGN, portable SIGN, and A-frame SIGN category. Under the current code, these signs do not require a temporary SIGN permit. The current code limits the height and display area for these signs, with the maximum display area allowed for a property based on with the maximum display area allowed for a property based on its zoning and based on its size. Lawn signs may be displayed a maximum of two 60-day continuous periods per year. Temporary signs may not be placed in the right-of-way. Most of the complaints that we receive for temporary signs are for signs which fall into this category. The most common issue is placement of signs in vision clearance areas and placement of signs within the right-of-way. Again, we're not proposing any changes to this category of SIGN. Temporary banners, these are signs that do require a temporary SIGN permit. There are some standards for this. The display is limited to 30 days. The size is limited to 50 square feet. And they're required to be attached to buildings. They can't be attached to fencing or landscaping. The most common compliance issues that we receive for these types of permits are with placement on fences. In 2016, we issued about 31 temporary SIGN permits for banners. The proposed amendment would remove the permit requirement here, but would keep all the existing standards in place. And the second category here is temporary signs for balloons. Balloons are any inflatable object. It includes the ones you see mounted on buildings and the air dancers or the flagmen or whatever you want to call those. These are covered in the code. They do require a temporary SIGN permit. The maximum display for these types of signs is 14 days in any six-month period and not more than two times per year. The most common issue is length of display. And in the last five years, we've issued eight permits for temporary balloon displays.
Eight?
Yes. The final category is the pennants. So these include both the flags that you see along the stream that are attached to poles and also the feather flags that are installed in the ground. So a permit is required. The maximum display with the permit is six months. There are no other standards that apply to these type of displays. And the most common issue with these type is placement, again, in vision clearance areas and in the right-of-way. In the last five years, we've issued 13 permits for temporary pennant displays. So we are recommending that the City Council advance the ordinance bill to second reading for enactment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll have questions for you, I assume, after we hear from the public. So first, we'll hear from Kathleen Hill. So the way this works, I'll just, again, individuals get three minutes. Neighborhood groups get five.
Five?
Five. So if you're representing a neighborhood group, let us know. Okay.
No, I'm an individual.
Okay. Go ahead and introduce yourself. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Hill. I'm a member of Ward 7, Mr. Mayor, council members. Every once in a while, you drive by a house that used to be pretty nice. But then you notice some changes. First, the lawn isn't cut. The weeds start to grow. The shrubs are overgrown. The house paint starts to peel. The screens are torn. There are extra cars in front. Some never leave. Some have flat tires. You think to yourself, well, that's not good. Drug house, abandoned, squatters, and you keep driving. Now, think about driving through a city. There are pretty parks, clean streets, nice walkable paths, and appealing yards and neighborhoods. You think, what a nice place to live and work. And you slow down to contemplate the possibilities. But when there's trash on the sidewalks, graffiti on the light poles, abandoned property throughout, it looks acceptable to litter, and it looks like the laws aren't being enforced. It looks like a city in decline. You just want to pass through quickly. You don't want to stop and shop, and you surely don't want to live there. Illegal signs are trash. They are graffiti. They are abandoned property. Often, they promote non-local businesses or even scams. We have hard-working, law-abiding local businesses here who follow the rules. They advertise by purchasing ads in local papers. They sponsor school sporting events and advertise in school publications. And they advertise via social media. They do things legally, and they respect our city and other businesses, and I want to patronize those businesses. When codes aren't enforced, illegal signs proliferate. First, one fitness center, then the next, then blinds, then painting, then gutters, then window cleaning. I'll buy your diabetes test strips. I'll buy your lawnmower. I'll buy your ATV. I'll buy your house. Residential real estate signs located at the property for sale make sense and are and should be legal. But now, there are myriad signs giving driving directions to houses for sale, then more directions, and then in an effort to compete, other realtors add their directions. Doesn't anybody have a GPS? Then to make the sign stand out from the others, the real estate signs at homes now light up at night. Where does it end? Enough is enough. All of the signs are distractions for drivers and often make it unsafe for drivers and pedestrians. They can blow into the road, block sidewalks. They're unsafe for our workers, utility workers. They can damage mowing equipment and injure city workers. There are codes for a reason. This is becoming a problem across the nation. I brought a link to news stories that other people are facing, and I brought a brochure that they use in Fort Worth, Texas, that's really effective. I brought SIGN Codes from other states, that you can find other ones as well, and also a public service announcement.
Great. Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Houses light up?
Yes. 4485 Century Drive now has an LED lighted SIGN for sale. It's Keller Williams, and at night, it goes on at dusk, and it's brighter than you can imagine.
There's one right off Liberty 2 on the other side of Liberty for Ward 7.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nancy McDaniel. You're representing Nen, Nancy?
Yes, I am.
Okay, five minutes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I'm Nancy McDaniel. I live in Ward 1. I'm representing Nen, the host of the first annual Inglewood Forest Festival.
And that was great, Nancy.
Yeah, it was. Well, I heard several people compare it to the art fair back in the 70s. So, got to start somewhere. So I submitted written testimony on this on behalf of Nen, but I came down here, I wanted to talk about it too, because this is kind of an important issue for our neighborhood association. And our main concern was with the part of the amendment that deals with temporary signs. So the first concern that we had was ending the permits for temporary signs. And the concern is that if you don't have a permit, how will you know when the SIGN was installed? Because the code amendment would keep the time limitations and how long you can display a SIGN, but how are you going to know when that began? And we even asked the planner who was previously engaged in drafting the ordinance, and she said, well, they could either ask the owner, or they could take pictures. Code compliance could take pictures and come back later. But, you know, that's not practical. That makes code compliance a two-step process. First, to come and document that the SIGN was there the day of the first visit, and then to come back, follow up at the end of that four-month, five-month period, whatever it is, 14-day period, and verify it's still there. The other thing is the temporary signs that seem to be, the newer types were springing up everywhere. And apparently, there are a lot of illegal signs in this city because these, the balloon things, those two-doo things, those are everywhere. And then, what, I didn't know this term before, the flutter flags. And I have to confess, I'm still not quite clear on the flutter flags because I thought when I had talked to staff before, they said that there is no limit on the display area or the number. And so I'm still not clear if it's just a limit on the length of time they can be there or if there's anything else. But those are two that you see everywhere. The other concerns we had were with the electronic signs. As Aaron Panko mentioned, the Planning Commission suggested, recommended changing the cycle time for the electronic signs in a commercial neighborhood zone to 30 seconds. And in our testimony, we said the purpose of the commercial neighborhood zone is to provide uses that are compatible with the scale and character of surrounding neighborhood areas. And I really have to question if flashing sign every 30 seconds is compatible with the neighborhood. And then finally, the one year for the electronic signs to come into compliance with the measurable brightness standards. That seems like a really long time for that. So in closing, I think it's just basically, we felt that this, the amendment is taking, is going in the wrong direction. It seems to be opening things up. I understand a lot of signs are illegal, but it seems to be, without that permit, without that record of when a SIGN is installed, it's just opening it wide up. And with that, I take any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Evan White.
Good evening. I'm Evan White, Land Use Chair of the Sunny Slope Neighborhood Association, with a three-minute pitch. About six weeks ago, I spoke about the proliferation of illegal lawn signs, including some put up by our green-shirted friends here. Like many other cities, the Salem SIGN Code prohibits lawn signs in the public right-of-way. The U.S. Supreme Court, in the case involving Los Angeles, said that the visual assault on the citizens presented by an accumulation of signs posted on public property constitutes a significant substantive evil. The city's interest in attempting to preserve or improve the quality of urban life is one that must be accorded high respect. In Salem, there is no enforcement of this part of our SIGN Code, even though there are volunteers such as myself willing to assist city staff. The lawn signs, fluttering flags, and inflatable green men make Salem look trashy. They are an example of the broken-window effect, a metaphor used to describe the concept that if a window is broken and left unrepaired, people walking by will conclude that no one cares and no one is in charge. So more windows will be broken. The people who place illegal signs may not know or even care if they are breaking the law. It's sort of like parking and knowing that you will never get a parking ticket and have to pay for it. Two of my daughters live in Lake Oswego, which does have an effective SIGN Code upheld by the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, which said that against the backdrop of numerous decisions of the U.S. Supreme Court, we do not doubt that Lake Oswego's interests in its appearance and the safety of the public are significantly well-established. And so I ask you, councilors, if you want to send the message that, hey, this is trashy Salem. We don't really care how we look. I volunteer to be trained and work with city staff. Let's close the loopholes, enforce the ordinance, take back our public right-of-way, and work together to make Salem look great again. Thank you.
Well, that was good. I hadn't heard the Giuliani doctrine used that way before. Yes?
Thanks. Thanks, Evan. Just a quick question. You're talking about illegal signs, and how I see it, there's kind of two types of illegal signs. There's illegal signs placed in the public right-of-way, and then there are illegal signs on private property. And are you speaking to specifically illegal signs placed in the public right-of-way or on private property, or both?
I'm only speaking to illegal signs in the public right-of-way, although I would certainly welcome enforcement of the other part of the SIGN Code. I think that if two or three volunteers could work with city staff on one Saturday afternoon with a city pickup truck, we could clear all the major arterials in town of illegal lawn signs.
All right. Thank you very much, Evan. Anyone else? Alan, go ahead. Why don't you line up and introduce yourself? Go ahead. Go ahead and Joyce will follow you, and then Alan will follow her.
Good evening, all. I'm Ellen Stevens, Ward 2. I submitted a written testimony, which is in your packet, and I'm here mainly to ask for enforcement. I'd be happy to be a volunteer on Evan's team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Joyce Judy, Ward 5. And I just wanted to say that it appears to me that we have an enforcement issue. And the solution that seems to be proposed is to eliminate the need for permits. Therefore, we don't have to enforce it. I would suggest that we not do that. I would suggest that we enforce the law and find these people who are putting up illegal signs and get rid of those signs. I know for a fact that there are many of these little wavy signs out there and all over the place. And when you have someone sit there and say that they only have 13 permits, I know that we have a lot more than 13 signs out there. So let's enforce the law and not change it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, good evening again, Mayor and City Council. My name is Alan Scott. I'm Ward 1. I'm also Vice Chair of Nen, and I appreciate Nancy coming to speak for them tonight. Tonight, I hadn't planned to speak, but after listening to some of the comments and especially the display of the proposed code, which I had seen, but I didn't quite understand it, I have a couple of comments. First of all, after the Nen Board came up with our recommendation, I attempted to contact all the other neighborhood chairs and find out what their thought was about the amendment. I only heard back from two, who said, we looked at it, but we have some questions too. And I noticed in the June written testimony, there were a number of the neighborhood associations that wrote comments. I guess one of the things that we talked about at Nen is we'd like to see this process kind of put on hold right now and be discussed at a neighborhood chairs meeting. I attended the last one. I think it was in April, and we were supposed to have one in July, which we didn't have. But I think it would be good for the neighborhood chairs to weigh in on the process. You're hearing that there seems to be a lot of concerns about not just the yard signs, but the wavy signs, and what's the time period, and how do you track that? And to expect neighborhood folks to say, okay, this one up August 1st. They now have a certain number of days, and then I can report it. And then if there is some enforcement of that, then they'll have to go out and evaluate that too. It just seems overly complex and maybe a little convoluted. And I really would like to see the neighborhood associations evaluate this a little better. I can give you an example of some of the concerns out at 25th and State Street. There's a business that has five flags in front of their property. And it's not a particular wide building. It's probably no more than 100 feet wide. And six months, that doesn't sound temporary to me when they're talking about time limits. And you have a certain amount of time limits for one style. It just, I'd like to see more discussion, especially at the neighborhood chairs meeting. I think that's it. I think everything else has been covered.
Thanks, Alan. Any questions?
You agreeing with me?
Council record.
Yeah, sorry.
Hi, Alan. Thanks for coming down. I guess my response, my question for you would be, the four of the 18 neighborhood associations weighed in on this. The other 14 didn't. So extending this to wait for the other 14 to weigh- 14 didn't. So extending this to wait for the other 14 to weigh in when they haven't already, um, why would we want to do that?
Uh, good question. Uh, I just, it just seems like there, there was not a lot of input. I, this is the first public hearing. Am I, I'm out of town a lot, so I don't track a lot of these things, and I come back and all of a sudden, somebody says, this is what's going on.
The Planning Commission has held a hearing on it.
Public hearings?
I believe so.
I don't know. Well, you can hear by the testimony tonight that people are not happy with it. It's not necessarily, uh, the neighborhood associations, but I think it's a better place to go to at one of the neighborhood chairs meetings, um, which I don't believe was done. I don't, maybe, maybe, uh, Brady Rogers can answer that. No, I don't know. Sorry.
That's great. Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Counselor Lewis.
Yeah, I guess just one. Um, the idea of sending this back to the neighborhood associations, although intriguing. Um, why would you leave out, um, including the business aspect of this, since the majority of these signs are put up by businesses for some reason, and if you don't ask them, you don't talk to them, how will you know?
Yeah, that's a good question. I only saw one or two responses from businesses on the public testimony and written testimony. So, I mean, of course, an involvement there. Uh, they have a little different bias than the neighborhoods, but... I think I'm done for the night. Thank you.
No more takers, Alan. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Counselor McCoy?
I moved, oh, well, I moved a-
Questions for staff?
Oh, I'm sorry. I asked, and you guys just sat there.
We all had our hands up.
Okay, I'll read the public hearing. Go ahead. Hoy, you go first. You're the one I looked at the longest.
I just didn't have any questions for the gentleman who just spoke. I definitely have a list of questions for staff. I apologize. My first question is around clarification about which signs this applies to, or which signs we regulate. And I'm gonna group this, I have a question about four types of signs that I'm familiar with, that I, I wonder about. I, I haven't been able to find it in the code. So, uh, one is, um, signs that are on vehi-, that basically a vehicle turned into a sign that's, that is parked around town for the, the sole purpose of advertising a business. And another one is along those lines, to say a semi-trailer that's parked in a field that's obviously just there as a sign, and not because it's a nice place to park, or, uh, so I'm wondering about that. Also, in my neighborhood, I don't, and I, I'm just gonna put this on the record, I don't go to businesses who, who pay people to stand on the street corner with signs. And in my neighborhood, they're on every street corner. And I'm wondering, do we regulate those? And also, um, yeah, I, I think I heard you mention something about signs on fences. And I'm fairly certain that every time I come to City Hall, I'm visually assaulted at this corner, right across the street, by I don't know how many signs. And I'm wondering if those are the kinds of signs you were talking about, on the fence, for instance, maybe not talking about specific signs, but signs like those.
For the first, first one, uh, the signs on vehicles, um, there's already an existing section in the code. Um, we're not making any alterations, um, to that. Uh, it prohibits signs from being placed on vehicles in order to get a sign that wouldn't otherwise be allowed on that property. Um, so there's currently a, a limit there. We're not proposing any changes to that limit. Um, for people holding signs, um, they, they could be considered signs under the code. Typically, when people are holding it, um, we, we are not enforcing the sign code. It's when those signs are placed on the ground, um, that they become temporary signs, and they would be regulated. They'd either need the permit or otherwise apply those regulations. Um, and then signs on fences, as I mentioned, temporary banners are only permitted on buildings. Um, they can't be on landscaping or, or fences, even temporary fences.
Okay. And out of deference to my colleagues, who I believe will have a lot of other questions, I'm just gonna ask one more question. It feels like we've given up. Is that, is that your sense? It feels like we've given up on enforcement of the sign ordinance, and I'm wondering what the wisdom is of making this change, if in fact that's true. And I don't mean that as a disparaging comment. I just, I understand we're short-staffed. We don't have a lot of resources for enforcement. It feels like we've given up.
Hi, Lisa Anderson will be the interim community development director. Um, that's a great question, and most of the comments that we received and concerns have to do with enforcement, not particularly about the, the code amendments before you. Um, Brady is here, so he can talk to you a lot about the demands for our code enforcement staff. And, um, I was struck by the first resident who testified, because she started talking about a house in your neighborhood, and as it starts to deteriorate, you wonder, is that a drug lab? What's going on? Why don't they have garbage service? Well, you know, why, why are the windows boarded up? And that's what our compliance staff are working on, because if you live next to that, that is a bigger, uh, drain on your community and your neighborhood than the illegal signs in the right-of-way. And those cases take a lot of resources and a lot of time. Um, so we have not been enforcing signs. If we get a sign complaint, for example, we have not received any complaints about the signs on the fences at the corner, because we would call. So generally, if we get a specific sign complaint, um, for example, company, a business has a sign that's too bright, it's too big, or something, the planning staff will call the business and try to get compliance, um, you know, try to just get them to comply, get the permit, what they need to do. We used to send people out to take the signs out of the right-of-way. I don't, we haven't done that since the recession, basically, maybe a little before that. Um, we did talk about it a lot coming up to this hearing, and what could we do? So the planning staff have volunteered, uh, quarterly to go out. Would take two people, uh, overtime on a Saturday to try to get some of the signs out of the right-of-way. I, I'm not sure we're as optimistic as Mr. White, that it would take one afternoon to get all the signs on the major arterials. We haven't done it in a long time, so I don't-
He's very motivated.
I don't know how many we could get. Yes. Yes. Um, so we're gonna attempt that. Um, Public Works Director has said that Public Works staff will be asked to pull signs in the right-of-way if they're near, if the staff are nearby working, already working there, they see illegal signs in the right-of-way. Um, I appreciate Mr. White's, um, volunteering to have citizens do it. There's some concerns that we have. Um, one, it's not always apparent where the right-of-way starts and stops, and if you just take a sign off somebody's property, then you just stole their sign. You weren't really enforcing the sign code. Um, and then also, there's some liability from having citizens out, um, doing, you know, city, city staff work. So that's, that's our proposal, to try to quarterly go out, get as many as we can, and then see with Public Works staff, also in the field, trying to do that. We don't think we've given up by getting rid of the temporary sign permit, because, as Erin was trying to explain, um, we already don't require permits for temporary signs for the A-frames in the yard and that kind of stuff. So we were just trying to be consistent across the code, not require it for the, the banners, pennants, and balloons. If the council feels like we should be requiring that permit, then, you know, we'd be happy to keep doing it. The only way most people know to even come in for a permit is they call and ask. So those are the 13 and five years we've got. Those people call and ask. Um, or in the past, we got more, because we would get complaints. We would send somebody out and say, you need a sign permit. But we don't have people to send out to say, you need the sign permit, so they don't get the permit. Um, it is difficult with the time limit to enforce. For example, we enforce abandoned vehicles, and somebody says, it's been there two weeks. Well, we have to go market, wait the five days, and come back. So that is a concern, that we don't know when it, when it got there. But generally, if we get a complaint about, you know, a balloon man or something, right now, we would just call and say, you don't have a permit on file, and they would come in and get the permit, and then the time would start. So it is still kind of a two-step process, anyway. So that was kind of a long answer, but hopefully that-
I very much appreciate that answer. I, that gives me some hope. And I would just say that if you'd be interested in having some city councilor volunteers on a Saturday with staff to ride along, to help out, I know, I would personally gladly do that. So if that's something that might be helpful.
Yeah, you'd just steal on somebody's property.
Counselor Cook.
I'm okay with that.
Let's, let's keep going here.
So Lisa, I have a question for you with the comprehensive plan update. Um, and the question that was brought up by Alan, the NEN, um, one of the NEN representatives, how often are you circling back with the, uh, neighborhood chair meetings to include them on comprehensive plan, uh, updates like this?
Well, the, and maybe Brady can talk about, the format has changed a little bit at neighborhood chairs. It's really the chairs meeting, and they set the agenda. Um, sometimes, you know, I go to every meeting, but I don't give them a list of every project we're doing, or an update on every project. I think I was the only topic at the last meeting. I talked about, um, how to be involved with land use, and, um, uh, what kind of notices we send to people, and, and how they can respond. Um, for this one, we did send out a, um, notice or email in December to all the neighborhoods. Four responded. We offered to go to their meetings. Those, we went to those four. And then when we had a proposal, we sent out again, and, and we, you know, so we tried to do it through email and offer to go to their meetings.
Thank you. I'm really glad we're doing that strategic plan update. I just have a couple of questions for Brady, um, with respect to Counselor Lewis. Brady, I'll give you time to stretch out before you get up here. So when was the last time the fee permit schedule was updated for, um, the sign process, whether it be the, the tube dudes, or the, the, uh, temporary signs? When was the last time the fee for violations was updated?
Um, good evening, City Councilors, Mr. Mayor. My name's Brady Rogers. I'm your Neighborhood Enhancement, uh, Division Administrator. Uh, the sign violations are all civil infractions and scheduled as a $250 fine. Um, that has not changed since, I don't know, 10, 12 years, I think. Um, so it's a civil infraction, and because it's a civil infraction, you have to witness the violation. The person has to see it themselves.
Because you have to tie it to somebody?
Yes. You have to see the person placing the sign in the public right-of-way themselves. If you don't see it, you can't write the ticket, but you can confiscate the sign.
And the, the permitting process, there's no fee for the permitting? That's more just to theoretically start the clock, or to streamline the process, to see when a violation occurs?
Sort of. We would never permit a sign in the public right-of-way. So we, I mean, those are just illegal straight up. There are temporary signs that can legally be placed on private property, and those are the permits that people ostensibly were getting.
Okay. And then, um, is there a staff dedicated, uh, to this enforcement issue, and this is still, it's from the sounds of it, complaint-driven?
It is complaint-driven. Um, no, there's no staff directly assigned to it. However, some sign complaints are of such magnitude that we respond to them anyway. They have a slightly higher priority. Uh, there was one recently where it was a large sign, and it was placed in the, uh, that parking strip between the curb and the sidewalk. But it was close enough to a driveway that the size of it interfered with the vision from people exiting the driveway and the vehicles coming on in the gutter lane. And so that one was a hazard. Had to go out for safety purposes. Had it been just on the other side of the sidewalk, we wouldn't have gone out at all.
And there's no restriction on content? If a neighborhood is concerned, um, that the sign content may be inappropriate or not in keeping with the neighborhood, um, I get a lot of those concerns at neighborhood meetings. Is that something that-
The, the content is immaterial. It could be a blank sign, and it would, we'd treat it just the same.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Lewis.
Yeah, Brady, I just have one follow-up question to Counselor Cook. I didn't, I didn't hear whether, um, you currently charge a fee for a temporary sign, or is it just-
Well, there are fee schedules for the temporary signs that are legally installed. Um, but, yeah, there's no fee schedule for the illegal ones.
That's where we get away. Schedules for the illegal ones.
You have another question, Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I do. Um, so those that call the city and say, hey, I wanna place a legal sign in a legal place, um, they're charged the fee, and the folks that just put the sign up are not charged, are not paying a fee.
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay. Counselor Kaser, are you?
I did.
You have your hand up?
I did.
Okay. I'm just gonna go round the horn.
Okay. Uh, not sure who to direct this staff-wise at, but I was intrigued by the comments Kathleen Hill gave. She said, illegal signs are trash, or abandoned property. Um, and I guess one of my questions is, if somebody litters on the public right-of-way, so they throw down, I saw somebody once drive up, and they had a big gulp, and they just threw out of their car and drove off. So I can go over there and pick it up and throw it away, because it's on the street. It's on the public right-of-way, or this was on the planning strip, or whatever. Um, and that's fine. I mean, the city's gonna say, yeah, please do that. Keep, our neighborhoods are gonna say that. So I'm just wondering, what is the difference between that and, say, a, a sign that somebody's placed? The one I saw recently was affordable dental, and it was spelled out with, like, somebody had cut out letters out of a newspaper and put it on there.
It's the Branson Milk Dental.
Um, and it's like, I'm never going there.
But it, it's like, what's, what's the difference, really, between litter and signs
in the public right-of-way? Because, um, I've heard people say, yeah, you can pick them up, but you have to leave them in place, because the sign owner could come back, or you might not know it's public right-of-way or not. But sometimes, it's very clear, like, this is in the public right-of-way. It's on the street. Um, so I just, my question, uh, my question to staff, I guess, is, we don't, we encourage people to pick up litter, but we were not necessarily encouraging people to pick up signs in the public right-of-way. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Thank you, Counselor Dan Atchison, City Attorney. There, there is a difference, because in, in most cases, the signs aren't considered abandoned under state law. They're considered for someone's personal property. So if, uh, people are out willy-nilly picking up signs and throwing them away, they're likely violating state law. So we, we can pick up the signs that are in the public right-of-way, but we have to hold them and try to find the owner. Um, in the past, we've, we've had various city employees with their pickup trucks driving into work, throwing signs in the back of the truck, and, uh, we've had to go through those issues. So I don't, I don't encourage people to just randomly, uh, pick up signs in the right-of-way.
So the big gulp's not considered private property, or personal property?
Or the statesman journal. It's from-
Or the statesman journal. Right.
I got an ordinance for you, Counselor Kaser.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, I just, I, one of my questions also was, what was the reasoning behind getting rid of the permits for the temporary signs? The, the ones that, like, you know, businesses going in, they need something to get going before they can get their, their permanent sign. What was, what was the reasoning for getting rid of the temporary permits? Was that just, or getting rid of the permits for temporary signs, was that just because it was an enforcement issue, or is there some other reason for that?
The main reason is we don't require permits for the temporary signs you put in your yard, the A-frames and that kind of stuff. We were just trying to be consistent across the code.
Okay.
And we don't get that many people actually apply for the permit. And so we just, we're just trying to be consistent.
Okay. Um, and then I wanted to know, too, that some of the concerns I heard from neighborhood groups were the, um, cycle changes and the recommendation by the sign representative, or the representative from the sign industry to change it from one hour to 30 seconds, the, the cycle, um, in the commercial neighborhood zone. And, um, there was some concern about that, and I guess I have two questions of that. Was anybody else public, did anybody else testify about that, or was it just coming from the representative from the sign industry? And two, if we have neighborhood commercial versus commercial zones, I'm guessing there's some reason why there's different zoning for those places, and if you could talk a bit about what the differences in terms of the zoning are between those two ones, and why it would make sense to have the sign code be the same for both.
Um, so to the first question, that was the only testimony. Uh, Planning Commission was from the sign representative. Um, and then your second question is, what's, what's the difference between a neighborhood commercial zone and other commercial zones? Sure. So, um, neighborhood commercial is supposed to be small-scale commercial located within a neighborhood or a walking distance of a neighborhood. Um, we currently have one property in the city's own neighborhood commercial. Um, but the amendment would also change commercial office zone, uh, neighborhood center mixed-use, which is also one property, and the Fairview, um, mixed-use zone. So commercial office would probably be the biggest impact, because we do have quite a bit of land in its own commercial office.
So as far as the neighborhood commercial and the mixed-use commercial, or neighborhood and mixed-use, there's two properties total.
At the, at the, yes, currently, and has been for years. Doesn't mean that they couldn't be, you know, there couldn't be more in the future.
Thank you. I think that's all my questions for now.
Uh, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Uh, many of my questions have already been answered, so that's good. And, um, I wanna look at this from a little bit different way, and I guess this is for you, Mr. Rogers, which is, yes, we have a $250 fine per violation of the ordinance. I guess my first question is, how much have we collected in fines on that in the last year?
Uh, zero.
Yes, that's what I thought. Uh, my second question is, and, and, and I, I would assume the answer is because you can't afford to have somebody in the city staff sit out there and look at right-of-ways all day to see if somebody's gonna run up a place to sign.
That's exactly right.
Well, so what if, just say hypothetically, it might be college pro painters, or it might be, say- be, say, a local appliance store that has signs all over the place? If you have the name of that appliance store on there, in your view, that is not enough to say it's their sign that was placed there? You think there might be people running around placing those signs willy-nilly? You have no connection with that appliance store?
Using that logic has lost in court repeatedly for us.
Okay, okay. That's too bad. You know, maybe we could, maybe we could amend the code to say if there is a name of a local business on the sign, it is presumed that that local business placed the sign. But we might have issues with that, too, but that's another thing. Then, I'm interested in this, and I think this is for you, Aaron, in the measurable standard of the electronic. You know, I'm, I'm thinking of that kind of like, I know obscenity when I see it. So, you know, you say now it's more objective. Well, I'm interested in, how is the objectivity of the criteria you have now, do you have any idea how it fits in with the eyeball test that you were using before? Is it gonna make things brighter or less bright under the subjective test you were using?
We did actually go out and use a light meter on some signs to test how this new standard would work. Under the old ordinance, it was all judgment-based. It couldn't be more brighter than reasonably necessary, and that's gonna be different for every person. Using the standard based on the size of the sign, it gives you a distance back with a light meter. So it gives you a very clear standard of a sign that exceeds...
Well, I understand. I guess my question is, if you use those standards, do you think it's gonna make the signs brighter or less bright than they are? Lisa Anderson Ogilvie's nodding her head. I don't know which way you're nodding, because that was a compound question.
I think less bright, because we get a lot of complaints now about the signs being too bright, and we, and we go out there, and it's very hard to enforce. But if, if we could just have a meter to, to say that they were in violation, that would help.
And then, this goes to Mr. White and Mr. Hoyes and my volunteering. I got a parking ticket one time up in Portland for parking in a handicap space. And the reason I got it is there are some volunteers who cruise through parking spaces in Portland specifically to see if you're parking in a handicap space or not.
They do that, too, in Salem.
I, I, in Salem, too. I actually beat it because I am a lawyer, and they didn't have the right signage. There wasn't a sign on the wall. There's only a faded sign on the ground. But, you know, there's somebody all the time. So I, you know, that's sort of the same analogy I would, I would draw to that situation. Thank you.
You didn't see it on the ground, really?
Well, it was a picture. I took pictures.
Okay. Do you wanna, do you wanna question him, Nanki? Are you, do you have any questions? Brad, do you have any questions? Counselor McCoy, do you want to make a motion, or you want to ask questions?
I want to have a question.
Okay.
I have a question. I don't make a motion.
Okay.
I have, on the adjustment stuff, I have a question. And it just, I'm on page eight of, there's, yeah, eight. We have classes. You got a class one adjustment is up to 10% of the applicable height, blah, blah, blah. And a class two adjustment is anything other than a class one adjustment.
That makes sense.
So, why do you, I don't understand why you need a class two if, why don't you just have a, an adjustment for a sign and deal with it that way, instead of having a one and a two? Because then you get over on the next page, and you've got an application for a class one adjustment, shall be granted if the adjustment is not more than 10% of the height, blah, blah, blah. Which means automatically, anything under 10%, you're gonna grant anyway. So why don't you just make it, why don't you make the sign, I don't understand why that's there, rather than increasing what you can do by 10% and having one adjustment over that moving forward, if in fact, you're gonna give anybody that's goon at over 10% an automatic okay?
So the code currently has a sign adjustment, and it's the 10%, and it's automatically granted. So that's what the code has now. So we were just leaving that in there and making a class two, where if you wanted to do something different above more than the 10%, in the example Aaron gave, they wanted a, something that was bigger than 10%, and it made sense. We're introducing a class two, and, and there's criteria for it. This mirrors what we have in the zoning code already. So in the zoning code, we have a class one adjustment for a 20% adjustment to a standard, and then we have a class two for something that's not a 20%, that's above that.
Okay.
Just gives different options.
No, that makes no sense to me. It's not, I don't understand why they're doing that. They just have something in there to do it.
I mean, you don't need a class one, because it could be covered under class two. But a class one, we were just trying not to change it, because it's already in the code, the 10%. So we were trying not to get more restrictive on that.
Counsel, just a sec. Counselor Nanki?
Just a quick one in regards to staff actually being able to see signs, because we're out in our neighborhoods all the time, and if we see a certain kind of sign, go up and take a picture and email it to staff, would that not count as a, an official start date?
If there's an extremely objectionable sign, and you take a picture of it and send it to us, and it's dated, we would take that as the start date for that sign.
Well, more so the balloon types, because I know people are just, and if it's 14 days, and we see one pop up, take picture, you know that it started 14 days, and we don't have to try to get through a weekend or four or five days, just to have staff document the start, too.
Yes.
And another point, I know we've talked about the illegal placement of signs in the right of way, but sometimes with the tube dudes that are in more of an arterial way, those inflatables are on the sidewalk. So they can, they can hurt someone who may not, may require more width on a sidewalk to be able to move a mobility device. So that would be difficult to wait two weeks to have that start, to not have access for that section of road.
That's a different, it's a different problem.
And any sign placement that's hazardous, like the one I, the example I had about the traffic vision clearance, but if it's blocking the sidewalk, crosswalks, anything like that, let us know about it, and we can, we can attend to those as, as well as we can.
So that would be the A-frames, the tube dudes?
That are on the, that are blocking sidewalk.
Any of that on the sidewalk. And it doesn't have to block the whole sidewalk? It's gonna do part.
There has to be a pedestrian path that's available. So there's some parts of town where the sidewalk might be eight feet wide. If there's a two-foot sign there, and pedestrians can still easily get by, we won't consider that a hazard.
Okay. Counsel, Counselor Kaser?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really quick, just wanted to ask about the cycles changing for electronic signs. So I know it's changing in the commercial neighborhood and the commercial office zones. Aaron and Brady and I were out actually measuring sign lights one night last week, and you had mentioned at one point, there was, and I don't know what zone, and this is my question, what zone is the eight-second change permitted in already? And that's not changing.
Those are most commercial zones, so anything other than CN, CO, and industrial zones, public zones.
Okay. And that's the majority of the, is, the, I'm not sure, but the commercial office space, like how, approximately, what percentage of commercial is that in the city versus the ones that are in this eight-second cycle?
There's, I don't know the percentage, but more of the commercial end is, is commercial, general, commercial, retail.
Okay. And that's already that eight-second cycle that's permitted?
Correct, yes.
One more?
Yeah. And what's on, I, sorry, I didn't see it in there, but the schools that are in residential, the neighborhood schools that have the light-up boards, there's no exception for those?
Under the current code, those require conditional use permits when they're in residential zones. So even get that kind of display requires that extra process. And then through that process, there's usually dwell times or change of display times that are placed on that.
So the schools are paying the fees for it and the permit fee?
If schools in residential zones do require that, in public zones, there's already allowance for that display. So it depends on where the school's located.
Same with churches, same, same concept.
Correct.
Counselor McCoy?
I move to continue deliberations to August 28th.
Second.
My motion?
Your motion.
Completely, it's confusing. We've had a ton of questions. I'm not sure, but I think I want to mull this over, maybe have more questions of staff, and perhaps come back with some amendments. But I think if we want to do that, it gives us two weeks to figure that out, if we have some amendments or things we want to do, and, and move more orderly here through the meeting with that.
And you, a thought on this, too, who seconded this?
I did.
Hoy did. Another thought on this is, as you're looking at amendments or things you want to bring up that, to amend this, going to staff to get some help on this, I think, would be really wise, so we don't, we don't spend a lot of time trying to wordsmith something. I mean, it's, it gets to the point of what you're after. Does that sound okay?
Sounds great.
Gives you a couple of weeks to do that, and we'll really have some good language to work with. Yes?
I certainly agree. And I was potentially gonna make some motion, too, thinking that Counselor McCoy might have moved the passage in some form. I guess my question is...
Boogie.
Let's say, do we need another public hearing? I'm not advocating for one. I'm not, you know, we've heard from the public, I guess, enough, and I presume...
Like a work session?
No, 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 no.
No.
No, no work session.
We're gonna get together again in two weeks and deliberate, and you're gonna bring your amendments with you and any questions you have.
Yeah. And I'm, I certainly am not...
If we're not ready, then we'll move on to the next.
Yeah, we've had the hearing. It was noticed. People came, people gave us things. So we've got a good idea of what's going on, and I'm sure the staff is gonna be somewhat busy in the next two weeks.
Very good. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes. Lewis is the no. Okay, special orders of business. Counselor Hoy, you have transit.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move staff recommendation.
What's the, what's the number?
Three by two B.
I know the topic. I can only tell you what number's online.
What number is this?
It was low enough that it did change.
Okay.
Actually, the file number is the same, if you wanted to refer to the file number rather than the agenda number.
Seventeen dash four ten would be the reference.
Oh, dash four ten.
I, I just wanted to pull this, so we could have a, just a chance to speak about it. I don't have any concerns with it at all. I very much support it, and I appreciate the mayor's effort to enhance our, our committee. And so I appreciate your efforts. So I just wanted a chance for the public to get, to be able to hear about those efforts and, and see what we're doing here.
I, I'll answer your question real briefly, because I, I think that's a good one. I think the public made a very good case that the initial receipt of applications to the transit board looked pretty homogeneous, which is the result of what we got, was a homogeneous transit board. Once pointed out, it changed, and we got a lot of more, a much more diverse application pool, including a young person through the Boys and Girls Club, which I'm very pleased with. I have put on your desks the initial outcome from your transportation committee of the strategic plan development group. And item two is establish a transit committee to advise council, and then really came up with, I thought, a very good work list that we'll, we'll probably use as it moves through our strategic planning process to inform the committee of the kind of issues that we're looking at. Julie Warnke kept track of these, and I just thought it was a really, a really good representation of the kind of things, at least initially, we're talking about. This is not a limit. This is just a, a place to start. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, any more? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I move that the City Council accept the recommendations contained in the Commercial Vista Corridor Plan, which is file seventeen dash three eight three.
Second. Second by Nanki.
First of all, I want to apologize to Ms. Warnke for pulling this, and you had to say what I'm sure you would have rather been someplace else. But I, I do want to say a few things about it. First, this is an excellent report. I'm very happy to see the inclusion of sidewalks in various spots, not just on commercial, but also on some of the east-west streets. I think that's very needed, and that's a terrific thing. Same thing about the bike lanes, same thing about the buffered bike lanes, although buffered bike lanes is sort of a term of art, but any kind of buffering is better. The second thing I want to say, I think it was a very good stakeholder team. You had businesses represented, you had neighborhood groups, you had residents, you had people who are from all the whole spectrum of people who interact with that. And, you know, the last thing I want to say is, I would hope that at some point in the future for planning, we can continue south on Commercial Street, because the same problems that are there in the northern part of that are also present down south. And I specifically refer to the tragic death of Chatham era Pruden further south. And, and we don't know what could have happened if we would have had something by then, but I see one of the things is some more pedestrian crosswalks at this stuff. So I would encourage the staff to continue moving south and look at the same sort of, same sort of procedures and same sort of solutions to the problems we have done there. So thank you, staff, for a job well done.
Very good. Any, yes, Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Because it was pulled, I figured.
Hey.
Did I?
Yes.
No.
Yeah, you did.
It's been a while.
It has.
It's been like 15 years of saying Madam Mayor.
That's what happens when you get on as long as he has.
After, well, it's not even after nine o'clock. My apologies.
No, it's fine. Call me for breakfast.
There you go. The pedestrian crossing right across from Fred Meyer is north of Triangle. Actually, I was in one of the retail establishments right next to that for a couple hours on Saturday, and saw a mother and two small children run across, basically straight across from big town here, when all those, concern would just be that people aren't gonna want to do the other half block to catch a crosswalk. So concerned with that, but more so because of the Fred Meyer Fuel Facility coming up, as well as just traffic in general right now on Neef, which is just outside of the study area, and the Fay Wright Neighborhood Association, no sidewalks, no bike lanes, small children, and people just rip down that. And I know there's been a lot of concern on that. We need to try to help them out, especially if we're gonna stick in a major facility where...
There used to be residential.
Yeah. And I saw they actually have some of those up on wheels, and are getting ready to roll them out.
Okay, great. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Counselor Hoy, you have the police facility.
I move staff recommendation.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to pull this one as well, because, you know, the citizens of Salem have entrusted a great deal with us, and they have shown a great deal of support for the police by passing this bond. And I just want to make sure that everybody understands why this extension and amendment is up, and just have the chance to air that out.
Okay.
So I was hoping...
Who's, who's gonna air this out? Okay.
Well, it's, it's before you to really reconcile the, the time that will be needed to complete an appraisal for the property, to purchase the site for the police facility, and, and the expiration of the lease that has been in place to secure the property. Now, with the, the voters, the public's trust, and approval of the bond measure, we can proceed with the purchase, and that is underway. We will have a recommendation for council. The plan is to have a recommendation for, for council at your August 28th meeting, and I'm very, very confident that that plan will be met. And we'll have a recommendation for council for, for purchasing that site.
Very good. Any further, any questions for the city manager? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we will move on.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Point of order, sorry. I had written down as a poll as 3.2A.
You had a poll?
No, not me. I just had written it down when we went through them, and just want to make sure it wasn't...
I don't have that marked.
I wrote that poll. Okay. Bye, Ms.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, okay, thank you. Unless you'd want to.
No, I just.
We changed numbers. Yeah. It was Philly.
Okay. We will move on then to information. Special orders of business.
What are we doing for a screening?
Your appointments?
Okay. I thought we voted.
No, because they're changing.
Okay.
We're just announcing.
Okay, I'm just announcing the appointments, and it's in 5A, okay? You all talked about this, okay? Information reports. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. This was one that I actually had pulled until it, when it was on the consent calendar, became, I would echo some of the concerns or, not concerns, suggestions by Mr. Slater. I would also be very interested in some sort of targeting of the lower percentage areas to get, to bring them up, and I will say that none of those are in my ward because I think every neighborhood in my ward is above the 23%, and some of them substantially so, and I can tell you how wonderful that is to have it. So I'd love to see some real emphasis on the wards that are really, areas of the city that are really lower. So thanks.
Right.
I'm sorry, Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Very quickly.
Yeah.
Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director, thank you, Counselor Anderson. We have visited with Mr. Slater. You also, I think, received comments from Woody Dukes, and I responded to Mr. Dukes earlier today. I think we've done a fine job with our partnerships with Friends of Trees. We're going to start looking to see if we can do a lot more with more plantings throughout the community, and the idea of planting more in these low areas is a goal that we've had anyway. So Friends of Trees does a great job with community involvement and outreach, so therefore, those areas lend themselves, that program lends itself to certain areas. We're going to see if we can spend more money and do a lot more production of planting trees in other parts of town, particularly in areas that need it. So thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments on information reports? Ordinances, our first readings.
Ordinance Bill 20-17 relating to a change to the Salem area comprehensive plan map designation and neighborhood plan map designation for 2425 Strong Road Southeast, 3991 and 3993 Fairview Industrial Drive Southeast, and 4080 Reed Road Southeast.
Counselor Nanki?
Yeah, I move staff recommendation.
Second.
Second by McCoy. Any discussion?
Neighborhood was fine with it as well. I heard them discuss it briefly as well, and it is kind of how the Fairview Industrial Park has been evolving over the last several years as well, so it's consistent with past practices.
Very good. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, and second reading.
Ordinance Bill number 91-17 relating to transit occupancy tax, amending SRC 37.020030040050060070080090100110120140150160165170 and 190, repealing SRC 37.200, creating new SRC 37.025 and 37.185, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Counselor McCoy?
Yes, sir.
Oh, it's second reading, I'm sorry.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Cook?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kizer?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor McCoyd?
Aye.
Counselor Osick?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. I don't have any further public comment, so we are adjourned.